Okay.
We're all set?
We're all set, yeah.
Great, thanks Vanessa. All right, at 6:31 PM, we're one minute late because of Mr. Stivers. Calling to order, the Town of South Rose Meeting of the Board of Selectmen, January 19, 2021. Hi, everybody. Let me go through the governor, I forgot this last time, so. Let me go through the governor's prologue. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order opposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the South Grove Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of South Rose website at www.southrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner, by finding the meeting at www.southrowtown.com/remotemeetings. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on South Rose's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So again, with that, calling the meeting to order, and our first order of business is public comment, and I guess my understanding is Mr. Samino, the town moderator, has had his hand raised for a while. It appears to be still raised.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can't, hey Paul, can you hear me?
Marty, you beat me to it. I was going to tell you that your audio is, I can't think of a big enough number percent better than last time, so good on you for that.
You forced me to go out to buy, what is it called? It's a blue something or other. Anyway, it's a cool microphone, so I'm glad, I'm glad it's coming in better.
Worth every penny, sir, worth every penny. So very briefly, I did some homework since last meeting, as I said I would, and I want to just alert the board that, of two things, basically. One is that the governor's guidance from last spring regarding the timing of town meeting and the quorum size, both remain in place during the penancy of the emergency order, which of course still remains in place. That being the case, then, the, the second piece of what I just wanted to say FYI at this point, because it's obviously, it's still January 19th, but I've spoken with you all last time, and I've spoken with the town clerk since then, and I'm of the mind that we should expect, of course, that we will not be holding town meeting on March, Saturday in March, and it will be put over pursuant to the authority that the governor has granted. I don't want to do that too soon, because the requirement is that we put it over to a day and time and a place certain, and that certainly is easier said than done. So I just want to have your thinking and your planning as you go through the budgeting process and your interactions with boards and committees, with the advisory committee, et cetera. You know, it's sort of now, now it can be made official by me that that date will move. There, I don't, I don't, I don't see any scenario by which it would not move. And most probably into May, when the weather allows us to go back outside. The pace of the vaccination programs around the Commonwealth, and including in our town, are not such that I have any confidence that the town will have any confidence with an indoor meeting in any reasonable timeframe. So that's it, I, I'm not looking for any particular reaction, obviously you're free to react, but I just wanted to come back to you all with that sort of affirmative thought based on our discussion last time.
All right, Paul, we're gonna go around quickly. Lisa, anything for Mr. Samino?
No, other than, than I agree that, I think we can all agree that town meeting isn't gonna happen in, in March, and probably May or June is a more realistic timeframe.
Okay, Ms. Malinowski?
I agree.
Brian?
Nothing further to add, and completely agree with the decision of the moderator.
And Sam?
Nothing to add, thank you.
The one thing I'll say, Paul, is, is, what is, have you thought about the best, and maybe this is the best, the best mechanism for letting boards, committees, departments, and potential attendees know that this is the case? I guess, Mark, maybe, maybe this is a question for you and Vanessa, should we just, in other words, Paul, are you comfortable with the statement that something like, while, you know, pursuant to the Town of South Rose bylaw, the Board of Selectmen are required to set the town meeting date in March, and have done so from March 20th, but based on discussions between the Board of Selectmen and the moderator, it is definitive that the town meeting will not be held on that date, and the exact date is to be determined likely sometime in March? I mean, is that a statement you're comfortable making?
Yeah, I mean, the statute requires me to consult with, with public safety authorities and the Board of Health as well, and I will do that prior to, you know, making an official postponement. But I'm very comfortable with, with announcing that, I don't, I don't see any scenario where it's held on March 20.
Okay. Mark, do you just wanna write something up and, and run it by Paul to make sure he's comfortable with it, and we'll get it out on the website, and the Twitter account, and otherwise, just, again, the quicker the information is out there for boards, committees, and for folks, folks who otherwise might be thinking about potential attendance at town meeting, the quicker they know this, the better.
Sure, Paul, do you want me to write something up for you to take to Board of Health Emergency Management, or do you wanna have those conversations, and I'll, I'll write something up in parallel?
Yeah, I think in parallel, Mark, I, I don't intend to have those conversations immediately, anyway. I think the message right now is that March 20 is not gonna stick. The question will be, how far out do we go? Are we inside, are we outside? You know, the vaccination protocol in the Commonwealth between now and then, we may have some bearing on that. So I think consulting on a specific daytime and place is probably too soon. So the message, as of this point, is just not March 20.
Okay, I'll, I'll put something together for you, I'll shoot it over in the morning.
Okay. Marty, guys, I appreciate it, that's all I had.
Marty?
Great, thanks, Paul, yep, hold on, Paul, Sam?
Yep. Quick question, I think that a logical question, when we make that announcement, from at least the town staff, is what does that do to the budget process and so forth as far as what we need to do relative to timing here over the next couple of months? And I think that there are answers to that, but we ought to be prepared to provide those answers pretty quickly once that announcement hits, I think. So Mark is probably best positioned to deliver whatever that means in terms of budget timing. The answer is not, okay, don't do anything for the next couple of months.
No, but it also sounds like the, you know, not just the budget process, but, but I know the planning board has got potential hearings coming up on some, some zoning matters, and, I mean, they can listen to the, you know, the first, whatever it is now, nine minutes of our meeting, and get a flavor for the fact that it certainly sounds like everybody's, everybody is on the same page here, that it is unlikely that there will be a town meeting in South Grove unless and until we can have a town meeting outside, and everybody knows what the weather is like in New England, that's at least the middle to the end of May, probably in June. I think everybody could, everybody can do that arithmetic themselves.
I can, I will also add that I can represent, the town clerk concurs as well.
Okay, great.
Spoke to him earlier today.
All right, Paul, thanks very much, we're glad we got you on in the first public comment this time around.
Yes, me too.
You're welcome, you're welcome to stay till, you know, quarter of 11 when we finish tonight.
I may hop off and hop back on later, thanks.
All right, take care, Paul. All right, I think, hopefully that's gonna be, you know, sufficient guidance for the budget considerations and the planning board hearing considerations and others that may well be out there that I'm just not thinking of right now. Okay? Next item of business is scheduled appointments, we have two, the Conservation Commission and Fire Chief Achilles. I am looking at our attendees, and I see at least two Conservation Commission representatives, Mr. Smith and Ms. Danza, sorry.
Judith Watson should also be on.
Oh, and Judith, okay, I'm sorry. So if we can bring those folks over, that would be great.
We have a hand up, Marty, Ms. Rosenbloom?
Oh, all right, while we're doing that, I'm assuming it's part of public comment, so, Mr. Smith, Ms. Watson, and Ms. Danza, hold on one second, we may have one additional public comment. Do we have Ms. Rosenbloom in the system?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, hi, I just had a question related to town meeting. How would that affect, Personnel Board is having hearings for the SAP. How would this new announcement about town meeting being delayed affect our work? We were told that we needed to wrap up our changes by mid-February. Does this mean we don't have to, we can continue to deliberate on the SAP?
I, I mean, I think you were, was that from you, Mark? Who, who did that directive come from? It probably came from us.
That was based on the guidance that the board had for the, for the date of a, of a March 20th town meeting. So if we had to post per the bylaw, that, you know, that's really the guidance of when things need to be wrapped up. Obviously, if a town meeting in March isn't realistic, and we're looking at May or June, then obviously, as Sam pointed out as well, that this is gonna open up the, the timeframe a little bit, and give us a chance to work a little more on the budget, and some of the boards and committees more time to work on the articles.
So I would say the end of February has just become the end of April.
All right, well, thank you, teacher, for the extension on the homework. Now, I think it would benefit the board to have more time, we're exploring some revisions, and there's always more that can be discussed, and I didn't have any desire to rush the board through these things, having a feeling that February deadline was gonna dissolve. So thank you for that guidance, much appreciated.
All right, take care, Betsy.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith, Ms. Watson, Ms. Danza, welcome. And just a quick intro, we've done these updates with, boy, probably in double digits now, with various boards and committees in town. We're endeavoring to make it an annual thing, so that boards and committees have an opportunity to, to tell us what they've been up to, for us to ask questions about what you've been up to, and to see if there are any issues of joint interest and concern where, you know, communication, rec communication would be helpful. So with that, going along with the Attorney General's new guidance on the way we need to do agendas, we've listed out a number of topics. And, Mr. Smith, Ms. Watson, Ms. Danza, who should I turn it over to? And I guess what, I guess what I would, I guess what I would like is if, if, and maybe it's different people, but if you could give a quick sort of rundown of the individual topic, and when you get done, for instance, if Breakneck Hill Farm, then we'll go around quickly with members of our board and see if there are questions, comments, et cetera. Otherwise, I just think it's gonna become a mess procedurally. So with that as the initial guidance, who am I turning, who am I turning to? Mr. Smith, Ms. Watson, or Ms. Danza?
So I will start, oh, sorry, this is Melissa, and I will give just a quick, quick overview of Breakneck Hill Farm unless Ben or Judith has anything to, to start off with first.
I was just, just going to say that our chair, Mark Posamato, this is Ben Smith, I'm the vice chair. Mark was, has a scheduling conflict, was not able to come tonight, so I'm, I'm here in his stead, and we, here with Judith Watson, also Judith and Melissa, going to handle the, those specific agenda items, and if I get the opportunity at the end, I wanna make one more quick sales pitch to, Mr. Stivers was at our last meeting and suggested, maybe we could use the opportunity to let you folks know what we need to do our, to do our work, and I wanted to make one, one more pitch, or at some point in the future, in administrative, part-time administrative staff, so that we can make much better use of Melissa's time, but that's at the end, if we still have time.
All right, we'll, we'll definitely have time, we'll definitely get to that. So Melissa, all yours.
All right, so Breakneck Hill Farm, you know, I guess the stewardship committee has been working as hard as usual as they have, especially during COVID. They, you know, tried to do, or not tried, they did do a night hike around Halloween, which is very successful, so they're, we're very excited about that. You know, it's, Breakneck Hill's gotten a lot of use during COVID, there was definitely a lot of trash. We always have a problem with dogs and dog pickup afterwards in terms of dog poop, essentially. So that hasn't changed, you know, the DPW has been great this year, they helped out with mowing, so that has been a huge cost saver for us, and we were able to use a lot of our funding for the stewardship line item that they use at Breakneck Hill towards other projects that have kind of been put on the lay side. So stewardship is still running smoothly, we did put in for more money within the budget for that line item, because not only does that do Breakneck Hill, but that does the town forest and our other open space parcels, but Breakneck Hill, we also, the stewardship committee, I helped them submit a grant to Mass Wildlife for Habitat Management, which we unfortunately did not get, but we plan to keep moving forward as best as we can with the projects. I've been, you know, lucky enough during this pandemic to be able to attend the stewardship committees' meetings, so that's been very helpful in having the conversation back and forth between the two committees and keeping them connected. I'm sure most of the other questions was about the dump on Breakneck Hill. I believe you all also received the report from Paul Pazinski outlining our site visit that me and him conducted last year. And, you know, as a follow-up, we had before I went out with Mr. Pazinski, reached out to a few LSPs, because our previous one had since retired, to try and get the next best steps. And since then, you know, we've kind of been put on a waiting period from Board of Health to say, you know, wait until we kind of make our final decision on which way we wanna move forward. And in that report, you know, I think the first aspect of that is really getting a, a true survey, and really outlining what exactly our best plan forward would be. You know, the commission is definitely willing and ready if they do get guidance in something that they're supposed to be doing, but we've just been kind of waiting for any better directive. You know, we received the report, I think, just a week and a half or so ago, so there hasn't been much progress on that. It is my understanding that Paul has been in touch with DEP and making sure that we are within our regulations, and we're not creating additional violations by not doing anything. We have a long history of testing in that area, so there is not a public health concern at this time. So I think that's something to make note of, but I think that's pretty much where we're at. We're just waiting for guidance and trying to figure out what our next back step would be, and what the plan of attack would be for the future.
All right, Chelsea, I'm gonna go to you in a, in a second, I've just had one quick question. Is there, in, in terms of the, the last issues you were talking about, is there any sense of a timetable in terms of, of the necessary reports and potentially being able to address those issues? Or is that still be, still to be determined?
It's still to be determined, I think the most conflicting part right now is that we were kind of told that Board of Health takes kind of charge of this, obviously working cooperatively with, with other boards and commissions and DEP to making sure that we are within the confines of the law. So it's kind of, you know, I, I think as soon as we are told our correct first step, you know, we are absolutely willing, or at least myself and the staff, to start doing the legwork behind it to figure out, you know, what that timetable actually be. I think if the first step is just getting that survey, you know, then it's just terms of what budget does it come from, and getting someone out there. We already had the wetlands delineated, the BOs approved that money, I think, last fiscal year. So those flags are still out there, so it's just picking up those lot lines, the wetland flags, and then kind of better delineating where the dump area is.
Okay, Ms. Malinowski?
Thanks, Melissa, for that overview. I do have two questions in relation to the stewardship increasing 5K from FY 21 to 22. It looks like you increased your budget 7,000 from 20 to 21, 5,000's been spent this year. So can you kind of elaborate on what's been spent and what you're looking to add by increasing it by 5,000?
Yeah, absolutely. And so I'll also do another reminder that, that stewardship item isn't just for Breakneck Hill as well. So that'll also be used, hopefully we can figure out the Halorin access, and then that'll start being used to maintain trails and creating that trail system as well. There's also the various open space projects or parcels that we have that kind of has been on a to-do list to start figuring out, you know, which parcels are directly under our care and control, and making sure that those are monitored as well. That line item also goes to pay Sudbury Valley trustees for monitoring reports at Chestnut Hill Farm, and other various, you know, assistance that they might give us, mostly for just Chestnut Hill. We do have an agreement with them, and for the increase, so far this year has been mostly just maintenance. They did some, leave the follow-up invasive removal at Breakneck, and then they worked on other, there's also other trail mowing that's not done by the town. They mow certain fields at a time, so those are still done by an outside consultant. They have their pollinator garden out front, and the main reason we kind of held off on some of the funding as of right now is we were hoping to get that Mass Wildlife grant, so we could supplement, so we're gonna kind of change gears, we're still gonna get some of that work done. So that's kind of where the bulk of that money will most likely go in terms of taking, it's mostly the abundance of apple trees that have fallen and kind of is now overgrown, that have been meaning to come down and taken away. So that's probably where the most of that for the rest of this fiscal year will be going to. But moving forward, it'll be also to Breakneck, but more work on town forest and the Halorin property and others.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question is, in the report documentation that we got, it did say that there were no public health concerns, but there were public safety concerns. Can you elaborate on the difference between the two?
So public health is in terms more of, is if there was contamination getting into groundwater, in previous years, we have tested a butter's well that did not come back with anything as well. And so the public safety is more because there is debris that's partly above the surface, while this area is pretty much non-accessible unless you know where it is, because it is very overgrown. So it's almost, you know, it's difficult to get to, especially during the summer, but it's, the hazard is mostly tripping, falling, and personal injury.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shea?
Thank you, so the only comment I would make would be relative to the last part that you had talked about with the, that dump area. And I guess, if I heard correctly, that the Board of Health is advising that you hold off on getting another LSP involved right now?
I think they were holding off at least until their decision was made on Paul's report, and determining the next best steps. I just saw that outlined, the survey would be the next step. I think it was more so, you know, making sure we're not doing extraneous tests that necessarily weren't need, but were costly to the town, so just kind of narrowing down the scope, and actually what we needed to do was what my understanding was from just.
So I guess my recommendation would be to push to get an LSP onboard as soon as possible, and looking through the data that was submitted, it seems like, you know, letters and information from the, on the LSP's letterhead is very dated at this point, and I just think that we're in a better position if we have an LSP looking out for us at this point on this matter, that LSP may actually have input and guidance on stuff to include in the survey as well. So I, I think that, and I think I've said this before, but I think that we really need to be, you know, engaging in LSP to give us guidance through this.
Yeah, and I do have some preliminary kind of quotes and work scopes, so I can definitely kind of discuss with Mark and figure out what those next best steps would be working kind of cooperatively with Board of Health, make sure they're on track too.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Stivers?
Thank you, thanks for the update, Melissa. Couple of questions, maybe I missed it in the material, but do we have any rough idea what it would cost? I agree with Brian that getting an LSP involved is a useful thing. What LSP would cost to at least get this started, and what a survey would cost, just ballpark? Are we talking about $5,000 or $100,000, or hard to tell?
I'd have to look back at my documents for the LSP aspect of it, you know, I know surveys can be a couple thousand dollars, that might be definitely a lot more doable in the short term. And I think just on the LSP scale, I think it depends just, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, just the, the price that they come into, and if we need to do some sort of bid process as well.
I think that the last time it was bid out, there may have been some tasks that were bid price-wise, but I thought it was an hourly rate that we were working from initially, and then if there were individual tasks, we went from there. So I think we selected somebody based on hourly rate, and then, you know, they would let us know what certain tasks would be.
Thanks, and Melissa, any cost estimate on, on what it would cost to clear the vegetation off as Mr. Pazinski's letter recommended?
I think, I wanna say, the initial thought, I think it might have even been in Paul's report, was the 60 to 70K, you know, it is a decent area, and it's very overgrown, you know, it's been growing at least for 30 years undisturbed completely. So there's, there's quite a bit in there, and I think with all the, the wetlands around there as well, you know, it's definitely doable, I just think it'd take a little bit of effort as well to get it.
We can't let the goats loose and let them consume it, huh?
It's not, yeah, it's not as small as poison ivy, there's a little bit thicker stuff in there.
I guess my bottom line on it is, this has been lingering for quite a while. It seems to me that it's important to actually get moving on it, get something done here, and start again with an LSP and a survey. I would think that that's gonna be an important step, whatever direction it goes past that point. And, you know, money is obviously tight, on the other hand, I think there, there is liability there if people get into the more dangerous area and hurt themselves, the town, I think, has some liability, though we have insurance, it's something that I think is, is worth pushing to get progress on here. So I strongly support our finding a way to do those first couple of steps quickly, thank you.
All right, Ms. Prashil?
Thank you, Melissa, thank you for being here. I wanted to also please share our thanks with stewardship, they have done an amazing job of maintaining Chestnut Hill Farm, I know it's, it's, since COVID has hit, a lot of people are accessing the trails that may not have in the past, so I know they've done a lot of improvements, and they've done a lot of work there, so please share our thanks with them on, on the maintenance that they've been able to do there. A question, kind of similar to what's been asked, but I just, I just wanna be, be clear again for the public that may be listening, that there is no contamination issue on this site, that we are, we're looking at a public safety concern. And that being the case, Melissa, is there any way that we could get in, in the interim of, you know, getting somebody to come out there and, and survey and whatnot, but at least put some stakes up, some tape up, to, you know, just to do something to keep people out of that area? I know it's, it's hard to access to begin with, but it's just an additional step to kind of make people be aware to, you know, to not go over there, to not go through the brush. Has there been any thought on that?
I don't think there has, you know, honestly, half the time, I have to turn myself around to even find where it is when I go in there. You know, I definitely do not want to diminish the public safety aspect of it. I definitely think that's doable, but I really, I've not heard of anyone even attempting to go off in that direction. You kind of have to hop over quite a few things to even get to it. So I personally, you know, I'm not concerned, again, I don't wanna diminish the public safety aspect of it, but if that's something that you think is worthwhile, that's definitely something that is doable, though.
Well, obviously, I defer to you on that, Melissa, I mean, I haven't walked in there, I'm familiar with the general area, but, but if you think it's hard enough to get in there, you know, then, you know, I'm, I'm fine with whatever you and the commission. then, you know, I'm, I'm fine with whatever you and the commission decides. And just lastly, from a, from a funding viewpoint as well. I mean, I, I think, Mr. Purple, when, when we're looking at the budget for next year, I think the sixty to seventy number is something that we should be looking to insert in some way. I, I know I'm not telling you something you haven't already thought of a minute ago. But, you know, just, just to, to kind of put our thinking hats on as to, you know, how, how we're going to fund all three of these things, the surveyor, the cleanup and the L S P.
So actually, Ms. Brashio, the thing I was thinking of is you might want to carry that back to the Capital Planning Committee. At least the sixty to seventy thousand piece with that number. For the first two pieces, the L S P and the, and the survey work, we do have some engineering money. There's an engineering article that was twenty-five thousand dollars. I think we're probably a little bit less than that, but still sufficient amount of funds in there. It's under the, the board's jurisdiction and authorization for use. So I will work with Ms. Danza and come back with some numbers. I think I can handle two of the three. But again, that other piece is probably something that would have to be considered by, by capital planning to see how that into their plan.
I agree, but I wasn't going to throw that out there myself, seeing as I'm on capital planning and yeah, so.
You take the second, you take the third one.
Okay, that's perfect. That's it. Again, Melissa, thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's it, Marty. Thank you.
Maybe grant funds for number three?
Yeah, we'll look, we'll see what's out there. I think, I don't think this quite file falls under an M V P action grant, which is kind of disappointing. But I do have a couple webinars coming up about the municipal vulnerability preparedness program that I plan on talking with our regional coordinator to see if there's something that we might be able to wiggle with.
Good. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Anne. Melissa, I guess next you're going to move to Bigelow Road. And, and just, and, and I, I, I think the folks on the Conservation Commission know this clearly, watching a decent number of your meetings, it, it seems to, to come across that when we're, when we're getting these, these updates and, and our somewhere between recommendations, musings, questions and otherwise, they're, they're just that. And that ultimately, these decisions that fall within your jurisdiction are your jurisdictions. And I, I just want to make it clear that we, we don't mean anything, we don't mean to be thinking about, attempting, suggesting that we're going to encroach at all on the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I hope that's, I hope that's clear to you folks, but, but, but if it wasn't, hopefully it is now. So now Bigelow Road.
Hello, this is Judith Watson. I'm going to speak to the Bigelow Road, the Eagle Scout project. So the commission looks at requests from Eagle Scouts probably two or three times a year. They generally are looking to get approval for, you know, small projects. It's pretty common across most of the conservation areas in this part of the state. You know, wetlands, bridges, boardwalks, that kind of project. This is a somewhat larger scale project. It's a project, even though the applicant is a specifically named Eagle Scout, it's actually a project with under the, under the governance of the SOLF organization. And they have been in front of the commission for a number of months. We have not had them in front of us for, you know, for, for a hearing since the first of October. And the last conversation we had, we specifically asked them for a survey, which is, you know, part of the standard set of data that's required for notice of intent, which, which is what this project requires, because it does touch on the wetland area. We also understand that the Eagle Scout did go to the planning board on January the eleventh to have, I, I think, an informal discussion around parking and, and site plan approval. And if they are going to continue with the parking, that will have to go through a major site plan, which again makes it a somewhat larger project than most of these Eagle Scout projects tend to be. And I, I think, I'm, I'm sure you're aware as well, that there's been a deal of concern from the Butters, which we have obviously included in our hearings. But we, our area of jurisdiction is, is really just over the wetland area. So it's a, it's a somewhat, you know, it's a larger project than we would normally see. But also it's got touch points in a number of different areas.
And what is, Ms. Watson, what is, what is the exact, I, I've watched some of the planning board meeting where they discussed this the other night. What is the status of the matter before the Conservation Commission? What, and what, to the extent you have a sense of a possible likely timetable for whether it's a decision or a series of decisions?
So the scope of our jurisdiction is around the notice of intent under the Wetland Protection Act. They're due to come back to us, I think, on the twenty-eighth of January, so next week. And the only outstanding item is a certified survey plan, which I, you know, some of the commissioners, I think, felt may not be necessary because of the small scale of the, the project. However, because of the proximity of this particular SOLF area of land to the Butters and the fact that it may well require a major site, site plan, it was felt appropriate to ask for a proper survey document. And Melissa has worked with the Eagle Scout to kind of advise how that could be done and, and suggest, you know, organizations within the town that we, that often, you know, present those sort of plans to us where we were, you know, suggesting that they, they might be able to support the scout with that piece of work. In terms of the timeline, I think it really is down to two things. When, when they want to come back in front of us, it's currently continued to, to do January the twenty-eighth. But also I think that there could well be a consideration from the scout himself, because he's a senior. And it could well come to the point where he may not have enough time to actually complete the project if it does have to go to major site plan and approval. And that could well extend the timeline for it. And Melissa has, has actually put together some potential other projects that he may want to consider, but it's obviously, you know, we can't, we can provide that for him, but it's, we can't, you know, obviously dictate whether or not he, he stops the project, so.
Okay, I'm going to go to you, Mr. Shea. I, I will note that I've, the, the presentations by the, by the high school senior have been impressive and he's quite passionate about this particular project. So I have a feeling that he's going to make every effort to, to accommodate a schedule to get it done.
I mean, we would have him as an intern for the Conservation Commission anytime he wants to come back and do that.
All right, Brian.
Marty, I agree with your sentiment. I watched part of the planning board meeting as well. He's, he's very, very sharp. He's, and very dedicated to this. But, you know, really just the observation that I would have from Conservation Commission's perspective is I think that you're, the, the commission is doing everything that they should be doing on this. And they're looking at it properly. And given the, the scale and magnitude of it in comparison to others, just making sure that, you know, the proper documentation is in place, so. Hopefully, we can come to a resolution on this one way or the other. But I think your, the commission is doing, is representing the interests of the town as a whole very well through this.
Right. And thanks, Brian. Sam?
Thanks. I concur with Brian. I followed this and very impressive set of presentations by the Eagle Scout. And I think it'd be great to be able to open up this land for public access as proposed. I, I also understand the concerns of the Butters there. I think both planning board and Concom have made some very constructive suggestions. And I, I hope that they can find a way to get this over the finish line. It would be disappointing after all this work to not be able to get the project completed. And I think planning board had a couple of useful suggestions recently to maybe open the door a little bit with it. So I encourage everybody to keep working to try to make it happen. Thank you.
All right, Lisa.
Great. Thank you. I, I also concur with, with what Brian and Sam has said. I, I have followed and watched the meetings as well. So he does seem to be a very determined young man. So I, I wish everybody the best. I know it's, 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 it's a tough decision before Concom and planning board. But the bylaws will prevail. And Judith, thank you and the conservation for the detail that you guys have gone through with this project. Thank you.
All right, Chelsea.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you, Judith, for the update and for the commission's work on this one. I know it's tough with, when you have Butters that have concerns.
Yeah, Judith, this is Marty Healy again, coming full circle. I, I mean, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said by the other members of the board. I mean, it's a, you know, I, it's a, it's a fascinating project. And I mean, one thing I, I don't quite understand is exactly how he came up with the idea, because it's, it's quite, I was describing it to my wife and it's, the, the, the land is kind of like a lollipop. And he's figured out a way to get people to the, to the big part of the lollipop, which is, which is terrific. I also understand, and it, it sure sounded at the planning board meeting and at the meetings of yours that I've watched on this, that the very legitimate concerns of the Butters are being taken seriously and are, to some extent, have already been addressed. And I suspect, given the tone of the hearings, that they're going to continue to be addressed. It'd be great if there's a way to, to get, get this done, not only consistent with the town bylaws and requirements, but also in a way that, that the Eagle Scout and SOLF are, I think it's a terrific thing, but also the Butters are supportive of the, the ultimate approach and, and the conditions and the like that are taken. So good luck. And, and I've been impressed so far with the, the tenor, tone and substance of the hearings you folks have had.
Marty, if I may?
Yeah, Lisa, go ahead.
Mark Pazamato is in the participants. I don't know if we want to bring him over?
Oh, sure. Mr. Pazamato showed up. Okay, great.
Hello, all.
Mr. Pazamato, welcome. We have discussed Breakneck Hill Farm and we are on the tail end of talking about Bigelow Road. Ms. Danza on Breakneck and Ms. Watson on Bigelow Road have done a nice job filling us in. If, if you as chair want to add anything on any of those two subjects, we're, we're happy to hear from you.
No, I, I don't have anything really more to add. I think I caught the tail end of the Eagle Scout review that Judith provided and she did a great job there. So I think I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, great. I think then we're ready to move on to Chestnut Hill Farm. And is that Ms. Danza or Ms. Watson?
It is going to be Melissa again.
Okay.
So I think the last time we kind of had a discussion about Chestnut Hill Farm, it was mainly to do with the parking. So since then, the commission and the trustees have come to an agreement regarding the parking issues in that they have extended, expanded the C S A parking area, which hasn't allowed parking use. And it's instead, it's inside of the farmstead envelope. So previously, they had discussed C S A parking, so we already had an opinion that this was allowed. They are still within the confines of that envelope. So both parties came to that agreement and it did satisfy the requirements for planning. So it was kind of a best case scenario all around. The trustees have also expressed interest in, sorry, excuse me, taking back up the discussion regarding that trailhead parking lot to come to a resolution one way or the other. I think when they kind of proposed their initial, or their new proposal, which is now agreed to, they kind of just let it go for now, but they are still hoping to get some sort of resolution. So that might be coming in the future. We didn't have enough time at our last meeting to discuss, so that will be in a, a future meeting with the trustees.
All right. Start off with Mr. Stivers this time.
No comment. Thanks for the update. That's headed toward good resolution.
Ms. Brashio.
Great. Thank you. Melissa, thank you for the update. Just one question. When is the discussions regarding the updated management plan going to start? How far into that are we? I'm trying to remember back from our, our prior discussions on this. If I'm not mistaken, it was in the next year or so?
Yep. So it will be this year. Sorry, I just choked in my water.
Sorry.
So it will be this year. I've been working with the trustees to kind of go over the issues that have come up in the last eighteen months that, you know, we've already addressed, need to be in this management plan. So I'm working with the farm managers to kind of make sure that all of those issues have been accounted for and we're going to be, you know, reviewing that. I would assume probably starting July. I'm hoping to kind of have a more firm document.
Great. That's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Malinowski.
I don't have anything on this one. Thank you, Melissa, for the update.
All right, Brian?
I don't have anything on this one either.
All right, the, the, the one thing, and this has been a, a bit of a bugaboo for me. And, and I'm glad Lisa brought up the, the, the management plan. You, you probably know, if, if you don't, there was a, there was a, an application. Actually, we got a series of them for various events, Chestnut Hill Farm. And the last series, we declined to grant the application. And the reason we did is because the, and we asked some questions and, and the follow-up didn't really clarify them to, to our satisfaction. What the, I mean, these were events, these were carnival-type events. They were, you know, they had food trucks and, and beer trucks and, and games and stuff like that. And so the, our inquiry, my inquiry was, where does this fall under the conservation restriction? And as far as I can tell, the response is under the, the educational definition, which particularly when, and, and the application that was in front of us was for a liquor license. And we had trouble squaring educational activities with a liquor license. But more broadly, I mean, the, the conservation restriction has, mentions the term educational activities. I think that's the term they use. And it, it's in, it's in sort of a definitional section. And then as far as I can tell, is only mentioned once more in the conservation restriction. And there really isn't a whole lot of guidance in there about what is an educational, what is an educational activity? And it was particularly problematic because it looked like pretty much every Sunday in the fall was being taken up with what is difficult to square, in my mind anyway, with educational activities. I've watched some of your meetings about this and I've seen that there have been inquiries by members of your board along the same lines and about how that ties in with public access and the like. And I guess I would encourage you in terms of the management plan. And I, and I'm assuming that's a, that's an open process with, with the opportunity for, for public input and the like. It just strikes me that the, the, the conservation restriction can't be tightened up, but the management plan could be about exactly what the requirements are to fit within that definitional structure. And in some respects, more importantly, what the role is of the Conservation Commission on signing off on those. Again, the management plan is a little bit murky about prohibited, permitted, when you need to be signing off on things, when you have to be consulted. And so I, I would make a strong recommendation that when you're looking at the management plan, that you try to tighten up both the, the definitions, but also the, the, the process. So I guess that's my, it's more than two cents, four or five cents on, on that issue. And if you have any reaction to that or, or comment, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing it as well.
No, I definitely, I think I agree with you. The commissioner definitely, the commission definitely had discussions along that point, you know, at the time. We were mostly focused on the use of the trailhead, trailhead parking lot. And I think moving forward, you know, I have kind of, that discussion is now open, that communication of talking with the trustees to make sure that that communication is smooth and that if the commission needs to do a sign-off.
Yeah, no, Melissa, I agree with you. I agree with you completely. Yeah, no, Melissa, I agree with you. I agree with you completely.
Oh, sorry. Got this bug in my throat.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Anything else? No? All right. Much less interesting than the first three. Snow storage at 22 to 24 Turnpike Road.
This is Judith. I will speak to this one. Yeah, it's much less interesting, but actually very fundamental to, in a number of ways, to, to the work that we're doing in terms of, you know, ensuring compliance against both Wetland Protection Act regulations and, and stormwater management permits. So this is an interesting one. So just to put this into context, the snow storage that was being referred to is at 22 to 24 Turnpike Road. So on, on Route 9, near the Gulf Driving Range and what was the Red Barn Coffee Shop. And in previous years, we had determined that it's actually outside the jurisdiction or outside of our jurisdiction in terms of the Wetland Protection Act. But we had, on a regular basis, sent letters to the current owners saying that he, he cannot push water or push the snow into the stormwater basin because then that impedes the function of that particular feature. So we have been monitoring it. There has, in December 2020, there was actually a new snow disposal guidance that came from the DEP. And in that, it specifically states that snow dumps are not allowed in outstanding resource waters. And this property is actually located in an outstanding resource water. So Melissa has followed up with the DEP. So to confirm if we do have enforcement activity, and we're waiting for a response and guidance on that. And certainly that will kind of lead us to the discussion of next steps at our next meeting. So we're hoping for a response from DEP before the January 28th meeting of the Concom.
And Judith, what, what are those next steps? I mean, is, is, I mean, I'm assuming some of the first steps would be communication with the owners to see if there can be voluntary compliance with whatever the Conservation Commission determined, determines is required under town bylaws and state law. But, but if, if voluntary compliance doesn't resolve the issue, what, what is the, what's the authority of the Conservation Commission? Is it to issue a cease and desist order? Is it to convene a hearing? What exactly are, are the, the range of potential next steps that, that could be taken?
I'm actually going to defer on this one to Melissa, if I may.
Yes, absolutely.
She'll speak.
Yep, so Marty, you kind of had it hit it now on the head in terms of, we would first, you know, typically, our process is sending letters to homeowners or landowners to ask them to come to a meeting to have a discussion. You know, if that doesn't work, then, you know, it's kind of a heftier letter that gets sent saying, you know, there is a potential violation. You may now incur fines or something if you do not attend a meeting. The commission can then kind of work its way up to an enforcement order if we do have that jurisdiction. An initial conversations I've had with DEP, which the commission kind of have been able to update them about because it was just today. It's kind of a very fine line when it comes to outstanding resource waters. It's only the water itself that is outstanding resource water. It's not the land around it. So I think the commission, their first step at this point, from my understanding from GEP, is to first kind of make that decision of, is there any jurisdiction that we really have besides the snow melt itself impacting the stormwater basin? Having been out there the last, I think, three winters, you know, that's really been the concern of the commission in the past. We've sent letters stating that as such. So it's just kind of following up on that from now. And, you know, the commission ultimately at our next meeting will probably have to make that decision of, no, we really do not have jurisdiction, or yes, we do, and therefore, this is our next enforcement action.
Okay, great. Ms. Brashow.
Great, thank you. Melissa, just, just kind of to follow up on that a little bit. In a case such as this, I assume when the project was permitted, they were uses as to what was allowed. Is this something that you could work with Planning Board on? Or, again, I'm not quite sure what your process is. Is it something you check with Planning Board, you know, to look at the decisions?
So our original approval was for the self-storage in this particular case, where the snow dump is specifically. I think like Judith mentioned, there's also kind of that driving range next door. And this was kind of a common development. I think they did most of it at the same time. So that basin does function for kind of that little roadway. So it was for a snow storage for the, this particular parcel. I'm sorry, it was self-storage for this particular parcel. And I think the, for on our, and what our jurisdiction ends is where the buffer zone ends. And where the snow dump is, we previously voted that it was outside of the buffer zone and looking at those approved plans. So and that's kind of where the lack of jurisdiction has previously come from and which most likely will still remain after my initial conversations with DEP. But we can continue to kind of push the, the basin, the stormwater aspect of it.
Okay, so as far as the, maybe this isn't a question for you, maybe this is more of a question for Planning Board then?
Yeah, I would think either planning or zoning code, zoning code enforcer. And I believe, you know, they've looked at it in the past, too.
Okay.
We've gotten this complaint, so I think they've kind of made their decisions in 2019 as well, but.
Perfect, great. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Melissa, this question's for you. Is it under your current umbrella to, to monitor when this happens? Or do you just follow up when you get a complaint about it?
Are you talking about just snow dumps in general, or? I guess it's kind of.
In general, yeah.
First, I guess snow dumps are kind of pretty rare in Southborough because there's not many places to put them. You know, we do have the reservoir, so, you know, I was made aware because of a complaint after I started. And then, you know, we kind of have followed up every year as we see the snow dump get larger. You know, just kind of a reminder to be sure not to impact that stormwater basin and the other kind of ongoing conditions that were a part of that original approval.
If I, if I may interject?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, so in general, in Southborough, historically, we have had issues with snow removal being pushed into various stormwater basins around town. One that you can view, almost every large storm would be the one down here at the, you know, with the, with the post offices and Dunkin' Donuts and so forth, that big basin. They love to push all the snow from that parking lot right in that basin. And that happens annually, you know. There's other places in towns where that, that typically happens. And, you know, you can't, you can't compromise the function of the stormwater basin by filling it up with snow because then it has no place for the water to go. And we have written letters in the past when we've seen this be habitual to a lot of different property owners in town where they have, you know, compromised their stormwater basin and, you know, large storms and that sort of thing. So as Melissa said, one of the things that we have monitored with respect to 2224 is to make sure as they bring the snow up there, they're not pushing that all down the hill into that basin, compromising the function of that basin.
And Lisa, or Chelsea, if I can jump in, Mark. So from, from an enforcement or informational standpoint, is it, is it, is it anecdotal that you all, either because of a complaint from a passerby or a, or a neighbor, will hear about a potential problem? Is there, is there sort of a, is someone that ends up, ends up on the bad list? And on an annual basis, there's a, you know, sort of surveying to see if folks who have had issues in the past are, have issues at the, in a, in a particular year? Or is there the ability to be proactive and to have someone out viewing potential danger spots or some combination of everything I just touched upon?
So as you know, we have, Melissa has a town-paid conservation agent for us, and she has office hours as well as field hours. And, you know, given the magnitude of, of, you know, permits, especially lately within town and also in a town that's got, you know, a lot of wetlands that's left to build on and not a lot, not a lot of high drylands, she's pretty busy. So she, you know, pretty, pretty actively goes out and looks at those permits that are coming in front of us for a permit, those that are open and outstanding, and, and, you know, kind of utilizes the time efficiently around that. The rest of us are, you know, volunteers. And, you know, if we see something, we're driving around town or something like that, you know, we'll give Melissa a call and say, hey, there's a potential violation. Can you go out there and take a look? Or we rely on, you know, town residents identifying something and sending something in. You know, other than that, you know, trying to get educational information out to folks so that they can kind of police themselves, if they will. You know, people have wetlands in their backyards, and they love to put leaves in them. They love to store, you know, wood that they, they may need in the future in these areas. And when a permit comes in for, you know, maybe they want a swimming pool or a deck or something like that, we go out and look, and quite often, we'll find violations in individual, you know, homes and things like that where they've utilized the wet areas and things like that for leaf dump or, you know, grass clippings and that sort of stuff. And we, we ask them to pull that, that stuff out, you know. So, you know, a lot of times it's reactive, Marty. It's not proactive because we just don't have the time and the bandwidth to, to, you know, cover all that.
No, understood. But, but thanks. That's helpful. And Lisa, sorry. Oh, no, it's Chelsea I jumped in front of. Sorry about that, Chelsea.
No, that's okay. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shea.
No further questions on this one, Marty.
All right, thanks, Brian. Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. This is an interesting one. As Melissa has said, this is a long-running issue. I can remember at least three or four years where people have had questions about this. And I've heard a lot of the conversation at the Concom about it. And the suggestion that maybe this is somewhere between the Concom, Planning Board, Building Inspector, I think is a good one in that my sense is that there are aspects to all three of those. And maybe there's a way that Mr. Purple or someone could actually get in there and try to coordinate the response and figure out a way to get this dealt with appropriately going forward versus coming back year after year and people sort of saying, I'm not sure where it falls from a jurisdictional standpoint. Again, I don't know. There's potentially a role for somebody to try to push resolution across the various interests here, but it would be great to get it resolved. I know I've gotten some complaints from neighbors about it over the years. And if it's not a problem that we can enforce, then it's useful to know that. If it is, then we should enforce it. So it'd be good to get resolution. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sam. I think we are now done with Turnpike Road. So next on our list is Middle Road, 147, 149, 151. Where are we going for this?
I can take this one, Judith and Ben, Mark, that's okay.
Go right in.
Listen.
Okay. So this is three applications that are currently in front of the commission with stormwater management permits. They originally had a violation for clearcutting the lots and going over the 50% disturbance threshold. And so the public hearing is currently open for these three applications. With our first hearing being, it was January 7th, and it's continued until the 28th. So there's still open. There's no decision yet. The public hearing was continued because the applicant needed to update some of the submitted materials and discuss further some of the landscaping aspects between the neighbors. So the commission discussed that the trees and privacy are kind of, and viewing aren't necessarily under the jurisdiction of the SMP bylaw. But the applicant, you know, does agree and was urged to kind of work with the abutters to come up with a mutually agreeable solution. So we're just working through the permitting in order for the applicant or the builder to come fully compliant with the bylaw from, to have a valid decision. And then the commission is also considering imposing fines, both under the SMP bylaw and local wetlands bylaw, because one of the lots does have the wetlands along the old trolley line for failure to have erosion controls installed and other kind of administrative type conditions of the order of conditions and failing to kind of adhere to that 50% threshold without a valid stormwater management permit. There is a current kind of amended cease and desist on the property, so the commission has allowed them to do foundation and framing work only because they will be staying under that 50% and stabilizing the rest of it until they have a valid permit. And once those outstanding issues are kind of worked out, hopefully at the next meeting, and then a decision is issued, the commission will kind of then have their discussion on fines from those initial violations and, you know, the appropriate amount, the number of days and the types of violations all kind of come into play with that. And I think that's kind of where we are at this point.
Okay, I guess I'm going to go to you first, Chelsea.
Thanks, Melissa. What are the ramifications for clearcutting?
You know, I think the ramification at this point is going over that 50% threshold that requires a stormwater management permit. If they were to, I guess, cut under that threshold, then we wouldn't have jurisdiction. I think the presence of trees is sometimes more suitable or important when we're working more so under the Wetlands Protection Act because they kind of come under the habitat's interest of the act. And while under stormwater management permits, we're really focused on just ensuring that they meet the stormwater standards for pre and post conditions. So it's more of a focus on stormwater versus kind of the trees aspect of it. You know, it obviously is a factor. It's not something that the commissioner, you know, abutters may necessarily like, but if they meet the, the bylaw specifications, then it's not something that we can necessarily restrict.
Thank you.
Brian?
Nothing further on this.
All right, Sam?
No comment on this one. Thank you, Melissa, for the update.
And Lisa?
Just kind of to touch on, I guess, where you kind of went on this, Melissa. So sometimes it's, it's easier to ask forgiveness after you've committed the, the act, I guess. So on, on this particular project, there's clearly is open permits. And just, just so I understand correctly, if, so now they're coming forth with the permits. And I understand that there's a lot of concern. I mean, obviously, we've all, it's a hot topic in town right now with, with clearcutting and whatnot. So had they come forward with the permits, and they would have been allowed potentially to clearcut more than the 50%? They just had to get permits to move forward with that. Am I understanding that correctly?
As long as the documents submitted met the requirements of the bylaw, then yes.
Okay, so they're coming forward to you now with those documents after the fact?
Yep.
And, and you'll go through them just as you would normally. So there may be no issue here?
Right, I think the, the only difference being the potential violation or the fees, the fines.
Okay.
Would be kind of the ramification.
Okay, and I know that, that, you know, people are watching this, and Mount Vickery is another one. And I think, you know, there's a lot of concern with clearcutting. And sometimes I think maybe people are a little confusing the two a little bit with, with, with what's going on. So thank you for staying on top of this. And again, very informative. Thank you.
Melissa, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and I, I guess I don't want to speak for the commission in sense of, you know, they also, they, they like saving as many trees as possible. Obviously, it's not the, the purview or the, you know, the wanting of the, the commission, you know, to have everything clearcut, you know. But we do have limitations. But I think the commission is very proactive in trying to find the best solution that is possible and maintaining, you know, natural buffers, even if it is not within a buffer zone as well.
Great, thank you. I think that was important. Thank you.
May I jump in? This is Ben Smith.
Yeah, sure, Ben. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just so there'd been a little bit of discussion of potential fines in the site, which may was, may well happen under Wetlands Protection Act. We haven't discussed that yet as a commission. At the last meeting discussing this, as, as Melissa mentioned, we, I think she mentioned, we don't have the authority to require landscaping under a stormwater management permit. We can't require them to, for instance, to replace all the trees. So what, what we can do, however, is issue fines. So the suggestion was made to the, to the developer, the developer's representative, that were they to propose putting in a bunch of landscaping to partially replace some of these trees and add some screening to abutting properties, that the commission may well view that as, as, you know, some, some worthwhile mitigation when the commission is, is thinking about fines. So because of the So you, because the fact is, uh, we don't have the authority to require this landscaping and, and the developer could simply say no. So we're trying to, uh, craft a solution, you know, that I think would potentially be better than just simply issuing a fine, but a solution that would give the neighbors some screening of the development. Just wants, just so you know that, that sort of the intricacies, intricacies of it.
Great, Ben. Thank you for the clarification.
Are you all set, Lisa? Okay, um, just, um, I'm, I'm curious and maybe it's, maybe, maybe it hasn't been an issue. So as a result, it's not an issue, but, has there been, and I'm not, I'm not focusing on this particular project. I'm asking a question generally. But, um, are there repeat offenders in this area? And if there are, is there a mechanism to, you know, put, put, uh, put a, a developer on a, on a, on a, you know, um, a list because of past violations that they can't get future permits? And if there's not, would that be something that would be worthwhile thinking about and exploring? So that's, I guess that's for anybody to weigh in on.
Yeah, I can answer that. I would say there's not an official list. So when I, now that the building permit process is on viewpoint, it is online. It is a lot easier. So when I sign off on a building permit, I've requested that kind of any soil disturbance project gets signed off by me. So especially with new single family homes or larger additions or, you know, redevelopment of a, of a residential project. What I require on the site plan is a very clear delineated limit of work in the calculation on the plan. So that was submitted as part of these building permits. And what happened is when it's usually in the 40 to 49.9% or it's near an acre, you know, whichever is less, which is, which is our stormwater by law thresholds. I have them put up orange construction fencing around the limit of work as a visual barrier. And I think that's one thing that didn't happen here and that's why it did. Um, that was part of my request in signing off with the building permit. I think a lot of it was, you know, just kind of as they started clearing, they realized that the trees behind wouldn't survive or, at least that's what was said at the, the public hearing. So they, their limit of work got a lot bigger, a lot faster than originally intended. So there, there is a process, um, to limit the amount that this happens. You know, these violations unfortunately do happen, but typically, you know, what I look for is that limit of work on the plan and the calculation of the area of disturbance to ensure that this doesn't happen. But unfortunately they, they didn't stay within that limit. So they went over pretty quickly because it was tight to begin with. So.
But if it does happen once, is there, and that same developer builder comes back, you know, six months, a year later and obviously if, if, if you're sitting there and you, you were aware of it, you'd know who they were, but is there a mechanism for?
I would, I would say that the commission definitely takes that into consideration as they're reviewing projects. If they are a repeat offender, and I think that's where the fines come in. Um, and that's where, you know, I require the orange construction fence and, you know, unfortunately this is a case where they just didn't put it up. So I think like I said originally, there's not necessarily an official list. But there's definitely ones that we do kind of keep an eye on moving forward and backwards.
Well, it's, 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 I'm not surprised, but it's too bad that there has to be something like that. So.
There's, there's not many, you know, we're very thankful in town that we do have a good handful of, you know, developers and contractors. So for the most part, we don't have kind of bigger ones like this one.
All right. Well, that's, that, that's good to hear as well. All right. Um, uh, uh, a location that we've had some involvement with ourselves, our board has over the last, uh, six or eight months, Deerfoot Road Extension. Who's gonna speak to this? Is Watson? Okay.
I'm gonna speak to this one. So yes, um, Deerfoot Road has been, um, under the purview of the commission for, well, I think almost two years now. It was the first project that, um, I went out and did my first site visit with Ben Smith for that one. So it, it has a kind of a spot in my heart. So anyway, more specific, um, what we really just wanted to kind of highlight tonight is, is where we are, um, in relation to, um, I think probably water runoff is the, is the overriding term. So that we, uh, we've looked closely at the paving done by the DPW and that is definitely aided in ensuring that the water is going where it was designed to go. There's one, uh, small item to be fixed there in the spring, which is fixing the elevation of the catch basin. Uh, and there is a low spot near Route nine, but generally, that is working as intended. And, um, both Melissa and I have been out there. I, I think other commissioners have as well, but we've both been out there uh, in pretty heavy rainstorms and, and watched the water, um, flowing. Uh, Melissa's been talking with the builder, for 133 and 124 Deerfoot, uh, they're going to be finishing up the basins in the spring. And again, a few spots in the basins that are slightly off elevation, but that, that's kind of, um, something that I think, um, you know, is pretty easily fixable. And we're also working with the homeowners, um, and the builder to close out the wetland permits at 139 and 141 Deerfoot. So there was, um, initially some smallish stormwater depressions, um, on each lot by the roadway and the intent there was to, for them to act as mitigation. Those are not, uh, installed and those are being worked on now, either installing them or, or looking at alternative measures that would provide, you know, the same mitigation as those rain gardens. So, you know, as you can, you can kind of hear each, each specific lot has, is, is got individual things that are still being worked on. Um, and then finally, you know, Melissa has been in touch with the homeowners on, on some of their outstanding, you know, concerns and has been out again in rainstorms and after rainstorms to look at their individual concerns, but there isn't anything that is, is highlighting a major violation, um, of, of that. So what we're anticipating is that come the spring, when the SMPs are, are kind of closed out, that's what would normally happen. After a, a project to this scale, uh, the final calculations will get submitted and that's at the point where we should be able to say, yes, uh, Deerfoot Road is, is officially closed, um, as a project.
Okay, great. Now that, that's actually, that's an incredibly helpful update. Um, and just luck of the draw, the, the, uh, the, uh, first, first man up is actually somebody who understands this certainly a lot better than I do, Mr. Shea.
Yeah, the one who drew the short straw when it came to our get involved on Deerfoot. Now, and I guess I would just point out that, you know, I had meetings with, that involved Melissa and Karen Gallagher as well. And yeah, I'll just take the opportunity now. I think it's been demonstrated in this update tonight as well, the professionalism that, um, Ms. Danza brings to this position. Think the commission itself was extremely well served. The town as a whole is well served. I think the commission does an excellent job as well. But I think that Deerfoot in particular is an area where, uh, and, you know, correspondence that, that I was copied on back and forth, that Melissa was involved with, just very, very professionally done. And the commission should be very, very happy and proud to have Melissa as its agent.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to jump in there for a second, Brian. Um, I am, I am just, um, grateful that she applied for the position. I mean, we were scurrying around trying to find somebody to fill the position when Beth Rosenbloom left. Um, she was a wonderful conservation, um, administrator agent as well, but, you know, getting, getting Melissa to join, uh, it's just been terrific and such a breath of fresh air.
And I, may I also just add to that, that, um, you know, Melissa was so helpful to me when I, when I joined the commission, um, a couple of years ago, because, um, I, you know, I don't have some of the technical background that some of my other colleagues, um, on the, on the commission does. And she's been like so amazing at, at explaining things to me, um, again and again, and sometimes again. And also I just want to highlight the work that she has done, uh, in leading the, the MVP program. But, you know, she and I are working closely on, on, um, both the MVP and, and th- those elements of the master plan. And, um, she's also supporting me as I look at, uh, how the commission moves forward and on our responsibilities with, under the, um, open space and recreation plan. So, um, I, I don't know where she, I, I don't think she sleeps personally, but, um, but again, kudos to her for, for, for her skills, um, and what she brings to it, to our commission.
All right. Thank you, Judith. Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. Um, I'll join the chorus of applause for Melissa. She does a great job. We're lucky to have her. And this is a good example of a project that's been a challenging one. I think she's provided, again, a lot of leadership through the maze on this one. A question, Melissa, um, do we believe at this point, sounds like that we believe that, uh, by springtime when the final steps are done, that, uh, we will be actually well positioned in terms of dealing with all the water coming off the site and that the concerns of the neighbors will have been fully addressed at that point. Have you been, have you had additional feedback from neighbors recently to say, we think we're on the right track or we're still not convinced that it's gonna work? What kind of feedback are you getting?
Um, there's still some chatter, um, between 122 and 124. Um, 124 is kind of the house that's, if you're driving up Deerfoot on the left, that's higher up the hill. Just still some concern of water trespass or increased runoff. You know, there was definitely when I went out there late or probably about a month ago, you, there was, you know, some drainage patterns, but looked like they were older. You know, now water likes to hit those, uh, divots and follow the path of least resistance. So I think based on the calculations that at least I've seen and that will be submitted, closing out the permits, it will, you know, demonstrate with an engineer's stamp that they have met the conditions of the stormwater by law. And I hope that that gives the abutters some, you know, peace of mind. You know, I know this was a tough project. I think like everyone has stated. But from what I've, you know, visualized in the field, um, when I've gone to all the houses, you know, I can see their concerns, the drainage pad pattern, you know, has been changed, especially when they kind of took off the, the vegetation. But I think at this point, everything has stabilized, like you said, and they're definitely getting there now that the grass is kind of more actually established instead of just kind of some hydro seed and little, little specks of grass. But I think we're, we're definitely almost there. Um, and I think the whole commission looks forward to seeing those calculations come in the spring when everything is done.
Great. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Ms. Brashow.
Great. Thank you. And, and, and Brian, I think you, you, you said it perfectly. Um, I don't know that I could say anything more other than to thank Melissa. You know, for the tremendous job you did. You, you, you've had some big shoes to fill. Beth was here for a very long time and, um, you, you have done a tremendous job. Um, and also Brian, I, I want to thank you for being on the board and going out and, you know, understanding this and then coming back and making it so that we could understand this as well. So I, I, again, I think once this comes to fruition, it will be a job well done by all. So thank you.
And Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. I agree with, um, my fellow board members, um, too. And thank you, Melissa, for being diligent and, um, listening to the feedback that you were getting and going out during rainstorms to see what was going on. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, across the board. A- as I said, when, when Judith did her, um, update, it, it was much better news than I expected to hear. So whatever the combination of, of work that was done here, Melissa, Karen, otherwise, kudos. If there's, it, it feels like there might be light at the end of the tunnel and this was, this was a thorny problem. So, it'd be nice. Now with all of these easy issues we've discussed the last hour and a half, what's this about needing additional staffing? I don't get it.
Uh, this is Ben Smith and this is a, what a fantastic segue. I'm so glad to hear that you've all, uh, had the opportunity to work with Melissa and you've learned what, what we've known for a while now that, that we lucked out and hired a superstar. So I'm here to, uh, press the case once again for a part-time administrative person. And it's because while Melissa handles, there are a bunch of tasks that she handles extremely well, as she handles everything well, they're not the highest and best use of her time. And these things are filing, general organization, uh, keeping track of permits and plans, research and retrieval of stored plans for developers and engineers and the general public. Follow-up letters on permitting for certificates of compliance and the like, writing and submitting all the legal ads for each public hearing, uh, managing deposits and payables for the commission. You know, these are things that obviously she does a great job at, but it takes away from the time that she could be spending, using her knowledge of Wetlands Protection Act, Stormwater Management and Open Space Management, which is where she really shines and has, frankly, shown us what's possible, uh, in an agent. So some of these, these tasks that, that she could spend more time on are, are tasks that they bring a return on investment. They are so incredibly helpful to the town. I'm gonna go through a few of them. More frequent visits to sites that have already been permitted by the Conservation Commission. The longer the, the period between site visits, the more easily small problems turn into big problems. And in a worst case scenario, a small site may receive a visit only after construction is complete and a little problem that could have been easily addressed during construction is now buried under landscaping behind a new fence or blocked in by a new addition to an existing home. More frequent site visits save property owners and developers money and headaches. It would allow her to spend more time reviewing applications and having pre-submital hearings with prospective applicants. The commission has seen over and over the applicants that meet with the agent before filing have fewer meetings with the commission before the project can be approved. Because applicants often bring engineers, wetland scientists and attorneys to these meetings, having fewer meetings can dramatically reduce this expense. And, you know, if Melissa were able to, if she had the time to, to meet with, you know, almost every applicant that comes before the commission, we could come closer to this, this goal of actually being able to have a, a single hearing for a project because she would have already been able to go through and screen the application and, and point out to an applicant the problem areas that could be taken care of before they even get to a public hearing, rather than having to go through, you know, three or four public hearings. She can also spend additional time assisting home and landowners with site-specific questions at their property, the Wetlands Protection Act and Stormwater Wetlands Protection by law and our Stormwater Management by law are very complicated. A little time spent by homeowner with Melissa, learning about these regulations prior to enlarging a driveway or installing a pool can prevent costly violations. On this note, one program that Melissa has, has initiated is a mailing discussing these very topics to every new homeowner in Southborough. My family and I, we moved about two months ago. We got one of Melissa's letters. Very informative and a great thing for new homeowners to get here in town. In addition to the wetlands and stormwater issues, the commission has a responsibility for a great deal of open space in town. Uh, I went through and tallied it up last year when I gave you this presentation before, and I, I was shocked at how much it really is. There are 530 acres placed directly under the care and control of the Conservation Commission here in town. And there are another five parcels totaling about 250 acres where the commission is the holder or the coholder of a conservation restriction. Now, these properties, they take work to manage at a dead minimum. They need to be visited at least every year to, to prevent encroachment, loss of access and identify problems. For instance, you know, littering or invasive species and so on. The stewardship committee does a great job, uh, in helping with the management of Brick Knuckle Farm and the town forest, but there are many other properties around town that, were Melissa to have more time, she could be more deeply involved with in, in, to pay back on that would just be immense and the quality of our open space. And, uh, finally, there's some tasks that the commission would like to take out, but we just haven't been able to. Freeing up some Melissa's time would allow these tasks to go forward. You know, she's, she's even, you know, I don't know where she finds the time to do it, but she's, she's already started to chip away at some of these, like academic and educational outreach to citizens in schools, uh, with her, her education and experience. She has actually worked with the school system already to help start dividing, uh, developing, uh, an ecology curriculum. So our local Wetlands Protection by law and Stormwater Management by law, they need to be reviewed and updated. Uh, and that's, um, you know, we really can't do that without Melissa helping us with it. It's a big, it's, it's a big task that needs to be taken on. And we would love for her to have the time to, uh, to devote to, for instance, surveying the, the, uh, bylaws of surrounding similar communities and so forth to see, can we find better ways of doing these things? Uh, and then lastly, we, there are a bunch of potential vernal pools around town that we need to get certified so that we can protect these, these vital habitats. This is just the 10,000-foot view of, of, what freeing up some time from Melissa. what freeing up some time from Melissa could could provide to the town. She, you know, we want to make the highest and best use of her time. And if she were effectively given another 20 hours a week to do this, I think the results would be amazing. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Well said. Just have you all had a meeting with the advisory committee yet?
We have not. And we didn't put the 19-hour person in for this year, you know, understanding the budget constraints. But I have sent in kind of just the memos to advisory as requested, and I haven't heard anything back.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Yes, Mark. So, I mean, one area, I'm not sure Ben mentioned this or not, but there are there are grants and things that we could be applying for for some of the conservation lands for you know, oversight and so forth that that require time to put those grants together and and apply for them. And we have had some residents in town in the past, especially the stewardship committee, apply for some, and they've been successful, but I think there are, there's more on the table there that we're leaving that we could we could go after and potentially get some funds to help manage these lands. If we had, you know, some more resources, some more hours of Melissa's time or somebody else's time.
Okay, any, I'm trying to think. I think we're at Sam, if anyone want, any of the other members want to weigh or quite have questions about this?
Yeah, I do have a comment if I may.
Yep.
One of the things, I certainly understand the budget pressures, and I know we've talked about this in past budget cycles. One of my hopes is that I know Mr. Purple is working on restructuring the townhouse staff a little bit. And it seems to me that it could be an interesting possibility to find some sort of pool resources there for administrative support, not only for CONCOM, but for other committees, organizations as well. And basically with current resources versus adding staff to try to find more efficient ways to do things, freeing up some hours. So if we could even find, you know, 10 hours a week or whatever out of that common shared resource to support the CONCOM, I think that could be a useful first start. And if we could find more, it would be even better. But I fully agree with Mr. Smith's comments that we're leaving not only money, but opportunity on the table here in an important area. And it would be great to find some support near term if we can do it at all. Thanks.
All right, other comments or questions? Yeah, Lisa.
Sorry, just one, like my comments were were somewhere along the lines similar to Sam's that also, you know, through COVID, you know, I know some departments may not be as busy. We've had this discussion multiple times before. There might be someone that can help in the interim now, you know, to get us through this next budget process as well. So Mr. Purple, you're good at thinking outside the box. So I challenge Mr. Purple to to come up with some possible solutions that might offset short of hiring somebody to be able to help Melissa.
I knew that capital comment was going to come back to bite me. I didn't realize it was so soon. So with with that discussion, I I will say that, you know, as Sam pointed out, you know, we did have a retirement in the selectman's office, and I am looking to bring back, hopefully at the next selectman's meeting, a proposal to the board as to how to restructure that position, which will provide some support to other departments in the townhouse, which have been seeking support. And also specifically, those departments which don't have any admin support, such as conservation, EDC and IT. And just some of the things that were listed off tonight by Ben, you know, are items that we definitely can take care of. We're already handling the payroll pieces. But to handle the payroll, the payables, sorry, and also to to handle some of the the records requests and and, you know, getting the documents and doing things of those nature, that'll give Melissa a head start on, you know, on on some of these other items, which will put her expertise to use. No one's been happier with Melissa than me in terms of what she brings to the table. And and I would like to see her be able to, you know, handle some of the higher-level things that she can handle and let someone else try to handle some of the things that 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 are better handled by others. So I'm working on that. I know I can't do the whole list and but I know that we can at least provide a start. And then we'll have some history as to where we may want to go from there.
Thanks, Mark. Oh, sadly, sir. Chelsea? No, and Brian?
Just excellent comments by Ben, excellent support for the administrative staff. And as somebody who in his day job designs a number of projects that frequently need Conservation Commission approval, the ability to meet ahead of time and have a pre-meeting with an agent in a municipality, just it really, really does go a long way. So that's an excellent argument.
So message heard, a tough budget year. But to be continued. And gentlemen and ladies, unless you've got anything else you want to bring up, we've covered our list. And we've taken up an hour and a half plus doing it. Incredibly, from my perspective, and I think the other members of the board, incredibly helpful discussion and information. And as I said, I I and I I know other members of the board, one of the nice things about the Zoom era is that these meetings are available to us and and have had the opportunity to watch an awful lot of your meetings and I know where you're appointing authority and could not be more impressed with the the diligence and energy. And heck, your meetings are longer than ours a lot of the times. So 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 that's my final comment. Keep up the good work and thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you. All right. All right, good night, everybody.
Bye.
Actually, not everybody, chief.
Everybody, we we can go to.
I know, I'm usually reasonably precise with my language. I let that that slip away. Chief, how are you?
Good evening, everybody. I'm very good. Thanks.
Nice to see you.
Nice to be seen.
And you have a proposal for us.
Yes.
You've written materials, so why don't you, whatever you need to do to supplement them.
Okay, back in November, we were advised that personnel board was looking at request for any changes that had to be submitted for SAP so that they could get it done, as you heard earlier, by January. One of the areas that this prompted me to look at was our part-time or call member pay scale and schedule and also the emergency management coordinator stipend. So I think in the memo I sent out to the this board was to consider the request to update and revise the pay scale for the call members. I think you have the list, and I can go over it if you want. But as we looked at it, it had not really been significantly changed since 2004. And the idea was to bring it a little more in line to our structure, also support the call members because they are a critical force multiplier for the town. Also, show that there was some consistency between their pay rates as they get paid per hour and kind of a step if you were to be a full-time for member of the department at the first step. So I can speak to that one first if you'd like, but basically, the rates would would scale down to Schedule D to specific positions, increase the rates. And I know Personnel Board wanted to know what level of support you had for this as they were going to deliberate.
Okay, I mean, the memo was pretty clear. Does anybody need the chief to to, other than responding to some questions we might have, going any more detail than we've heard so far? No, okay. I think I'm going with I've I've lost, I've lost track, so I'm gonna start with Ms. Brashio.
All right, great. So Marty, are we talking about the the memo in general?
Yes.
Or we're just, okay, great. Thank you. Hi, chief. Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Just a question on the Emergency Management Coordinator. What specifically is that position? I know it's been around for a million years. And I imagine it's evolved since its inception back, I think it was, I was told it was Chief Brock. So this goes back quite a ways. I could be wrong. Don't quote me. But basically, just to understand what this position does as it's outside of, you know, I I would assume it's outside of the current job that whomever holds this position does.
So I'll speak to the position. The town has Emergency Management Director, which is vested in the Fire Chief. And as you noted, at some point in the past, I I go back to at least 2008, there's some some of the stuff I've been finding, is they've had Emergency Management Coordinator. That position, as I understand it, is appointed by the Select Board. And that position works for the Emergency Management Director primarily in logistical, support, planning and grants. So the current position is a member of our department that works full-time. Many people know that person. Although the position itself isn't within the contract of the Fire Department, it is again, under the Select Board, and its stipend that it's currently getting under SAP is in the Civil Defense or Emergency Management Budget. When I arrived here, I know there was some the previous administration looked to increase the stipend, and I don't think it ever made it through the Personnel Board. It wasn't the budget, but we never paid the increase because it really wasn't adopted. Over the course of my year and a half year, I've evaluated, you know, what's the value of the stipend? What is the stipend for? And my conclusion right now is the stipend identifies and recognizes people that have an air of responsibility not covered by their current pay grade or position. It also covers hours in a compensation that they may otherwise not get. Full disclosure, like our other, that I'm familiar with it, within the Fire Department budget, there are stipends for certain positions that they receive a stipend, as I mentioned, but also have opportunity to be compensated for the hours working above and beyond their normal shifts. I would say that the Emergency Management Coordinator position was very important before I got here. In the last year and a half, it's been extremely important because it does a lot of the operational legwork and planning that I can't, as Emergency Management Director, commit to.
Okay. So as you look at this position and you look forward with with COVID and kind of in the world that we're in today, are there any goals potentially that, you know, are dependent, this this position's dependent on reaching goals? Or are you saying it's more logistical and planning?
Well, they get, the position gets assigned on a normal basis. That that position is our coordinator for CERT, MRC, and ensures that our emergency plans, which we have many, and anytime we have FEMA reimbursement opportunities, such as the CARES Act right now, that they participate. But often, these, like now, I've assigned that position some specific roles based on our current circumstance. One is working with the town accountant to better streamline and and get the maximum amount of reimbursement for cares. The most recent one that has come up in the last week is really doing the logistics and planning and vetting out our emergency dispensing plan for the potential mass vaccination clinic for the town. So often, I can envision that happens often as we move forward, that they may be specific projects, items that that position needs to work on.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Malinowski.
Hi, chief. How are you?
Hello.
So I had the opportunity to review the con, the fire contract and because I was curious as to why this was not, this stipend in particular was not included in the fire contract. So I I think we're going down a slippery slope on this one. And I understand it's already in the SAP. But I I have concerns about having a union employee getting paid outside of the union contract. And I understand that this stipend is actually paid outside of the fire contract. But I still, I still think that if we have a union employee, that the stipend should be included in the contract. So that's my my first kind of comment on this one. And and chief, can you elaborate on the overtime, like the overtime that's paid for this position and kind of how that portion works along with the stipend?
Sure. To clarify, what you mentioned earlier is that currently, the position is held by a member of the Fire Department, but it's not part of the contract that it has to be. And prior to my arriving here, it was decided that it would not be a stipend under the firefighters and officers contract that it would be outside of that. So again, it was, that may be something we look at in the future is what's the best design of the Emergency Management Corner, where do they fit in their compensation? But within the confines of what structure we have now. And I also, again, I, we're going to do contract negotiations with the firefighters and officers in the next year or so. So this may be something that's important to discuss. But I just want to clarify, it doesn't have to be a firefighter or a fire officer right now. And again, I mentioned the stipend really covers a level expertise and responsibility that the position has. And it covers some of the uncompensated time, especially off-hours that are done at meetings or at home because this physician will back the Emergency Management Director up occasionally. Plus his projects and meetings that they have to go to. But we do have the opportunity right now, any hours above and beyond, much like we do with our other stipend positions under the Fire Department, this person would receive overtime compensation for hours worked over. Now, because it's emergency management, we do leverage an opportunity to have it reimbursed. So a lot of the work on the COVID and mass vaccination planning, we're going to submit under the CARES Act for FEMA reimbursement or or state reimbursement. So not all money that we spend on overtime for this position ultimately comes out of our, you know, we have to front it, but it it doesn't negatively impact the budget as much as it would if it wasn't reimbursable. But because these are hours worked above and beyond the normal hours, it's consistent how we apply it to our other stipend positions. And the stipend is not at a level or designed to cover all hours that you would have to commit to the position.
Thank you. So you you had mentioned earlier that this is actually appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And Mark, I don't know if you know this, is that the only position that the Board of Selectmen appoints that's not a department head?
No, the board also appoints tree warden, I believe, and that's not a department head either.
But that stipends out of the DPW contract, right?
I'd have to check on that.
It is. The, so the, it is, it's in the DPW contract, but it references the SAP for the actual amount of the stipend. So I guess I'm questioning and I'm of the mindset that just because we've always done it, doesn't mean that's the right thing to do. So I'm questioning in in addition to if a union member holds this position, I understand a union member does not need to hold the position. But if a union member does need to, does hold the position, I do not think that we should be compensating them outside of the union contract. I'm also questioning whether it's appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to be appointing this position. And and I don't want to rush the decision on this. I mean, the the employee as of right now is getting comp- there is a stipend in place. This is for the increase. They're they're getting paid overtime for the hours, for the most part that they're working above and beyond their regular shift. I just think that maybe we need to take a hard look at what the best way is to, you know, build, build on the job, what, what maybe this board is looking for, Chief, what you're looking for in the long term and kind of what the best setup is. Um, because I just don't, I don't want to cre- I understand it already exists, but I don't, I don't want to increase a stipend that I in theory am not um, in agreement with how it's set up.
Okay.
Also Chelsea?
I think so, yeah.
All right, Mr. Shea.
Thanks Chief. Uh, with respect to the salary, I'm sorry, the Schedule D rates, where you said that you have included those in your FY twenty-two budget proposal. Do you have a sense what that translates to total, total dollar wise versus if the Schedule D rates were used versus what you're proposing?
Um, we did recognize that in, under our, it's called part-time salaries, but it pretty much all the call members, um, that they don't have any set schedules. So of course, it can fluctuate based on our call volume because they get paid primarily uh, for recalls or coming back to supplement the on-duty staff. And then we do have some trainings. And we were trending even before uh, reviewing the Schedule D that um, and I'm very proud of this is that there's uh, more interest in the department than previously, and we we've got a lot of engagement. So um, and that's been paid dividends through COVID and some staffing issues. Um, so I included a five thousand dollars increase in the uh, part-time line in anticipation for either uh, more hours, more call members, or um, the potential for increasing the rate. So I think five thousand dollars is a start, but I can tell you that if we're very busy, um, that could change. Uh, but I am prepared to live within that confines for the FY twenty-two budget and then see what the actual impact is. But I think it's important to realize that the call members don't have set schedules or hours. So the busier we are or the more simultaneous calls we have, um, we'll count on them more. The good part is they're getting paid by hour, not um, a call or a minimum of so many hours. So it's, it's a really good efficient way to supplement our staff.
Thank you. Also Brian?
Yep.
Sam?
Thanks. Uh, thanks Chief for the comments. Um, one question I had about the call rates. Um, are you, do you think that it's, it's important or critical to uh, change those rates to actually attract people? Or you'd said there's more interest in the department. Could we actually get the staffing we need on the call side with the uh, rates uh, not adjusted at this point? Or is that an important aspect of uh, getting the kind of people you're looking for on the call side?
I think, uh, we had, when I arrived, we had um, six members. We had somebody leave and we've been able to go up to seven. So in a year and a half, despite COVID and some restrictions, we've added two. Um, I think initially uh, the interest is not based on pay, but over time, as they commit more hours and are doing a lot of the same work that our, you know, entry-level members are doing to have some level or somewhat compatible pay, pay grade offsets the hours that, because they don't get all the benefits that a full-time member does. So I think it may not be more attracting, but retention that we see from this. Um, there was not a paramedic grade or step. Um, I don't think it was ever envisioned. We'd have paramedics on our call force. We don't have any now. But having that identified with a pay group step might actually attract people that are paramedics that live in or around Southport to um, become members. So maybe we'll see some benefit from there.
Okay. What, what, do you have a target for the, what's the right size of the call staff at this point? Is it seven or fifteen or three or?
Um.
Ballpark.
At the day, they have a lot.
I I have been actually.
No, but our goal, and I've committed, commented this to our department and our call members is, I would like to have ten active members. What it basically does is replicates, gives us two virtual shifts. That way we have some more capacity in an event. Um, and it takes a little pressure off some of the members that feel committed that they have to come to everything uh, and leave family. So um, my goal is ten, uh, and I'm hoping in the next couple of years to get to that level.
Thanks. I agree with Chelsea that it's worth rethinking some of the structure on some of these things. Yeah, not necessarily immediately here, but I also think it's a good idea to have a uh, a sufficient group of call firefighters, as you suggest, to leverage the the forces that we have at this point in a fairly efficient way. So I think this is the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Chief, just I'm curious, for the um, emergency management coordinator, in in your view, does it make sense that that person be a member of the fire department? That that person not be a member of the fire department, or does it not matter?
Um, as a structure exists, and with the person that's in it, I think it's, there's extreme value of having direct oversight on a regular basis with that position. Because uh, often a lot of the work dovetails into uh, a lot of projects we work on. I think uh, Chelsea brought up a good point, and in the, in the bigger picture is um, much like board of health and other posi- other departments, is there a better way to structure emergency management in the town so that um, one of the concerns could exist that if we had a large-scale emergency that uh, required the fire department presence, especially as me as the chief to um, uh, exert my authority and responsibility as fire chief for the town, to then have to try to have emergency operations center, emergency management run at the same time? That could be challenging, and because one of our members uh, is an off, officer that's the emergency manager quarter, we could, as long as everything's good, we're, and not um, come uh, challenge us for our time, we'd be, we'd be fine. But there could be a circumstance in the town of Southport where those two positions would have to decide, do we stay at the large-scale emergency? Or we go back to the station and try to manage? So um, I, I think in, over time, working with the select board, the town administrator, it may make sense to evaluate, what is the structure that we want in emergency management? So that we're prepared and be able to operate if we have multiple demands on public safety and town services.
Okay.
Marty, can I?
Yeah, go ahead Lisa.
Sorry, no, when you, when you're done, can I do a follow-up please?
Uh, yeah, my last, my last thing is just time. Um, and you may or may not have been on, we had a conversation with um, uh, Mr. Semino earlier that it looks like the earliest we would have a town meeting would be sometime in May. Uh, more likely, we're talking about the possibility of of June. So what is, I mean, is, 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 is the bottom line that this is wrapped up in your uh, budget consideration for the next fiscal year? Um, or is there a more, a more, is there more immediacy to your wanting us to be able to address it?
No, I think that it's part of the FY twenty-two um, submittal. And I also understand that as we move through, forward in the budget process, um, this would, um, of course, we need some support from the board of selectmen because the personnel board's looking for uh, a, a sense of where the board of selectmen uh, sit on both of these. And then, of course, advisory is gonna, I want to present to advisory. But I am cognizant is that these um, may compete with other um, priorities as we move through the budget process. So um, with any, with any approval, um, it doesn't mean automatically it's going to go into effect July first uh, twenty twenty-one. If it starts to compete with other priorities that uh, we need to uh, address. But I can't move forward with any of this without really uh, the support or approval from um, three entities, yourselves, personnel board, and an advisory.
Got it. Okay. Um, um, I'm all done Lisa. Um, you had something else?
I did, thank you. Um, so I think Chelsea's brought up some very valid points on whether the, the placement for any of the union employees is within the SAP. Um, I don't know that we can do anything particularly about it this year, but what I would like is potentially the board to give Mr. Purple direction. When is the next contract negotiation, Mark, um, going to open up for at least the fireside? Because that's what we're talking about tonight.
I would say uh, con- so beginning July first is the third year of the, of the, of the, of the uh, the three-year deal that we're now currently under. I'd say approximately ten months from now, we probably would start negotiations with all unions. So that's, that's.
So I don't know if, if, if the board has a, a thought or a stomach. And a- and again, I, I think there's ver- very valid points of, you know, our SAP employees and our union employees. Um, I would personally like to give Mr. Purple the guidance that I, I, I think the place for the cemetery agent, the tree warden, and the uh, emergency management stipend, those stipends should be done through the union negotiations. That's just my opinion. But um, that's kind of where I fall on this. I, I, again, I think they're, they're very valid points, and the SAP is non-union employees, and I don't think it's the place for it. And that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Chief, I don't think you're going to get a vote tonight. I mean, I think, I think um, in addition to what you just described, Lisa, I mean, I'm curious as to how the structure came about and whether there was, whether there was some rationale for structuring it the way it was done, or if it just evolved that way and, and without um, a great deal of thought that, that, oh gee, it might end up with uh, slots being filled by, by individuals who are covered by union contracts, but are also being compensated through the um, through the non-use, non-union mechanism. So I think some adi- some additional information on what Lisa brought up, what Chelsea brought up. Um, and, and also if there's any, if, if there's, usually, usually John Butler is a go-to guy for something like this to explain why this happened in eighteen forty or whatever it was. Um, uh, but maybe just some additional information. So Chief, I think that's where we are off of tonight. Appreciate the presentation, and we're going to keep mulling it, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, Marty, is there any um, I guess, position on the, if we separate out the emergency management corner as far as the call members, of moving that forward with some support, or do you want to take this whole, as a whole package? Uh, because I do want to have some, provide some um, follow-up with the personnel board.
Yeah, I think that, I, I think that particularly since we bought ourselves some additional time, and it, that's why I asked the question about it being wrapped up with the FY twenty-two budget. I, I don't, I'm not comfortable um, weighing in tonight. Um, I guess I'm, I'm across the board looking for some additional information and, but also think about it a little bit more and see, see what, what makes sense.
That's reasonable. I appreciate the consideration, and if, if there's any additional information I can provide, uh, please feel free to reach out.
All right. Chief, as always, thanks very much.
Thank you already. Have a safe night.
All right, bye-bye. All right, moving on to um, chapter four, reports. Uh, mine is first. Um, two things. Number one is the um, uh, the language that is, that is drafted up. Um, you know, I went back and forth about whether or not to do this, and then I've been, every week or so, I've been taking a look at, at agendas and um, uh, there's been improvement, including among, including ours, uh, in terms of the way they're, they're structured. But there still are a decent number of agendas that just have, you know, um, uh, members' reports, executive directors' reports. And I just think it's, I don't want us to stub our toe, um, you know, another board or committee on an open meeting law um, um, complaint. You know, unfortunately, we have some folks out there who are um, uh, are, are looking for any excuse to file an open meeting law complaint against boards and committees in the town. And so I think it makes sense if, if, I'm happy to revise it or listen to proposed revisions, but to send something like that to um, uh, to boards and committees in towns. So thoughts? Let's, why don't we start with uh, well, with, I'll start with you Lisa. You still muted. There you go.
Hi, thank you. So Marty, I think this is a great idea. I, I think this is a great first step. The more guidance we can give, um, the better everybody served. I, 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 um, I'll be honest with you, I didn't probably review it as much as I could, but what I did, I, I think this is a great first step. I'm sure others will have, um, you know, more substantive edits to it. But um, thank you for taking this on, and I think everybody will be well-served by it.
Okay, thanks Lisa. She's looking at you, Mr. Stivers. Uh, Chelsea?
Um, I think this is great. Um, but how, what kind of guidance are we going to give if somebody wants to bring something up outside of, or within the forty-eight hours? Are we recommending that they amend within that period? Or kind of what, what's the best way for them to handle that?
I, I mean, I guess my reaction to that is it depends. I mean, it depends on, 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 for instance, the matter you brought to my attention. You know, is it, because then you're, you're juggling. Does it, you know, you know, does it make more sense to try to get something posted? Is there enough time that it will be meaningful, um, as opposed to like today where there had been a holiday? Um, or is it, is it more of a ministerial, um, uh, mi- ministerial type item that not only fits within the forty-eight hour rule that the attorney general has set out, but also is um, uh, you know, isn't going to require a board vote, isn't going to, isn't going to require a change in policy or something like that? Um, I'm not sure. I mean, believe me, I wrestled with that. Um, I wrestled with a lot of things about like, you know, this, this could have, this could have gone from whatever it is, what, four paragraphs? To about twelve paragraphs, you know, if you try to address every possibility. So I'm, I'm happy to listen. I just, I, I honestly, I couldn't come up with a, with a simple paragraph that, that was able to give um, particularly good guidance.
So I think your policy comment is a good one. I, I mean, I think if, I think if the topic, and maybe we say something like this, if, if the topic is going to lead to a policy change or um, have some sort of ramification for something, then it should be amended. That the agenda should be amended regardless of the timeline. Um, but if it's, but if it's something that's more of um, an update or kind of an FYI for people to be aware of, then that's kind of the line you draw. I don't know. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to leave it open and then have them, you know, have people come back and say, um, you know, well, it, it fell within the forty-eight hours, so we didn't update, and have it be significant.
I'm, I'm fine giving it a shot. I will, I will tell you that, that I wrestled with it and, and language kept begging the question. Um, and yeah, again, I'm, 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 I'm happy to give it a shot and, and, and have another go-around with the first meeting in February, so.
Okay, but I think um, that was my only question. I think this is great. So, thank you.
Brian?
And just following up on that point, I could almost see where, you know, including language, like if anything that requires a vote, if there is anything that results in a vote, that shall be put off until a properly posted agenda can be done. You know, I think anything that, that's going to result in discussion that results in a vote should not happen uh, under report and. should not happen under report and shouldn't happen with less than the 48 hours.
Okay. And Sam?
Yeah, I agree with both Chelsea and Brian on this one. I think that Brian's point is a good one, absolutely. And I think it's worth expanding a little more to say that something to the extent that, you know, if a discussion relative to the board's policy is likely as a result of this particular item, then you need to notice it versus even a vote. So and I think Marty, your earlier comments were good in that you can't deal with everything, but maybe some comment about if in the reasonable judgment of the proponent at this point, blah, 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 to leave the door open. But I think it's worth putting something in there about this topic just to make sure people are aware that we are aware of it and are concerned about it and we expect people to use good judgment.
All right, I will. I will keep myself to one more paragraph.
Forty-seven words, no more.
Something like that. Yeah. Okay, so I'll we can put that on for the what is it, February 5? Is that the right date? Yeah, February 5 agenda. Okay. And the other, the only other item I have is, you know, it's interesting. It says MSA, which you would think stands for Massachusetts Selectmen's Association. It's actually MSBA, Massachusetts Select Board, two words, Association. But they haven't changed the initials yet. Anyway, with that, our own Lisa Brascio is has been appointed as the District Five representative. It's a big deal. District Five is is it all of Worcester County, Lisa? Yeah. So so the the select board representative for all of Worcester County, which includes interacting, I think, I think the main liaison from the state government is the Lieutenant Governor, thinking about policies that have statewide import and effect will be in very good hands for District Five with Ms. Brascio. So congratulations.
Thank you.
That is it for my reports. Members' reports. We've got the items listed, but not by individual. So Ms. Brascio, I think at least one of those is yours, maybe two.
The first one is mine.
Okay.
So on January 8th, Southborough participated in a car parade to honor veteran and 40-year Southborough resident Arthur Butler on his 100th birthday at New Horizons in Marlboro. Over 40 vehicles, including Marlboro Police and Fire, Southborough Police and Fire, veterans and citizens came together to celebrate Arthur. The Marlboro Fire Department presented Arthur with a custom-made fire helmet in recognition of his decorated military service. He also received a flag that was flown over the Capitol on Veterans Day, a proclamation from the House of Representatives, as well as the Board of Selectmen. Over 300 cards and well wishers were also received. Channel 7 did a wonderful story so all could share in Arthur's birthday. So thank you to all who participated in any way. Thank you for Marlboro for spearheading this and our veterans and happy birthday to Arthur.
Great. And I told I I told my 95, my mom, who just turned 95, that 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 was still goal-setting for her. And she had to get her acting gear and think about those three digits as triple figures. So no, and it was great stuff on the on the various websites as well about the ceremony. It seemed terrific.
Hey, Marty?
Yeah, Sam.
I would add that I had the pleasure of participating in the Doll Men's Club meeting on that day, of which I'm a charter member. They spent the better part of the hour chatting with Arthur. They actually got hooked in via Zoom to that group. And so they had an interesting conversation in great detail about the joys of SPAM, which was a military staple. And he and others of the Doll Men's Club were actually in the military and looking forward to many delicious meals of SPAM and other military delights there. So it was a fascinating conversation. He clearly had a long history with a lot of those folks and great to hear. He was very energetic and seemed to appreciate the back and forth very much of the great meeting.
You know, it is. It is. And it's, you know, every every year, there are fewer people who served in World War II. And you realize it was just a completely different event than anything since then and that there were, you know, folks like this, just tons of them walking around, who, as I said, didn't just serve in World War II, were war heroes. You know, anytime you hear Okinawa or something like that, you know, any, any, you know, history you've read or documentaries or even films you've seen about what happened in the in the in the Pacific in the 1940s, man. So and 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 he made it to 100 on top of that. So good for him. All right, recognition of DPW crew for response to the water break, which is well deserved. Who was this?
That was me.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
I just wanted to recognize the DPW and their efforts for the repair of those two water breaks. You know, those Seams at Water Main breaks frequently occur in the winter. They frequently occur at night and they frequently occur at a time where everybody else in town is safely tucked away in their homes or in their beds, sound asleep. And it's the DPW crews that get the call to to go out in those adverse conditions and try and locate and and repair those breaks. So I just want to give a shout out to the DPW crew for their work efforts.
Yep, well noted.
I echo that because I was very happy to have.
You were in the eye of the storm.
Friday night. So I was happy that they did it within the day. So thank you to them.
All right, office hours. Chelsea and Sam, were you both? How did it go?
Good for our first one. We had two actually participate, which was great. One kind of just popped in to say hi and the other one we had a nice conversation with. So one thing that I wanted to and I and Sam jump into, one thing that I wanted to talk about was we had said that we would leave people in the waiting room so that they could wait their turn. And somebody did join the waiting room while we were meeting with another resident and then left before we got to them. So I I just I don't I didn't see a function to be able to message them in the waiting room. So if we can't do that, then I think we should probably bring people in altogether, unless there's a way to let them know, you know, we were meeting with somebody right now. Just because I don't want people kind of hanging out there. I know it said it in the memo, but I also don't know if people have time to wait around. I mean, it's, you know, five, 10 minutes, but so I just didn't know what kind of the temperature of this board was.
You know, Chelsea, Marty, if I can add, so when we did normal office hours, you know, anyone could come in and sit, you know, you weren't restricted to, you know, staying outside of the the main meeting room. So maybe that's not a bad idea to just, you know, bring everybody in and kind of keep track as they come in. And, you know, that would be my suggestion. I mean, we do it when we're upstairs anyway. There's been times I know when when Selectman Shay and I did office hours and we had three or four groups of people waiting to talk to us. And everyone's patient and kind of waits their turn. And but they can still hear, you know, what other residents are talking about. So I don't think that we're violating any privacies that way. But I think that's just a suggestion.
I agree with that completely.
So you probably, I'm sorry, Sam, but just want to jump in. I think that what you probably could do is simply bring everybody in and then just mute the people who, you know, aren't participating until it's their turn to participate. And maybe that solves the issue. Maybe it was intimidating.
Sam, I think there's something, I don't know why, all of a sudden, I'm having trouble hearing when you're speaking. There's like a there's an echo or a.
Really? Is it any better?
Now it's better.
Thanks. I would let all of men and then try to organize it in order of when they showed up for it.
One thing, and you know, I hadn't I hadn't thought about this with the when we were doing it at the townhouse. But, I mean, it is conceivable. It's probably not going to be the case very often, but it is conceivable that someone wants to come to office hours and raise an item that they don't want to raise publicly. And so I guess maybe that's some it might be worthwhile to to make a statement about that, you know, at the beginning of office hours or on the on the notice or something like that. If there's if there's something particularly sensitive you want to raise and you don't want to do it in a in a public forum, because it's not a it's not a posted meeting, then you're welcome to do so. And then we'd have to make the call about whether or not it was appropriate to be to doing in a private conversation. But I don't, again, I don't think it's going to happen very often, but it's probably worth at least thinking about whether or not we want to give that sort of leeway.
But people could call any of us directly.
Yeah, that's true.
They do.
That's true. Okay, so so the next the next office hours would be a week from, do you do it on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So it would be a week from Tuesday. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it alone. I'm happy to have company. I'm happy to listen to other suggestions.
I like to do it. I'd volunteer if you need another person. So but I, again, everybody ought to get a chance. So.
I'd be happy to do it as well. You know, I'm sure Mr. Shay as well would.
Yep, I could as well. So.
Yeah, so just pick a day and let me know at time.
So are you looking at January 26th? That would be a week from tonight.
Yeah.
So.
Is there a Zoom available for that? Do we know?
There generally should be. We try and reserve Tuesday nights for the Selectmen and we have three meeting rooms now, so I don't think that will be a problem.
So based on a further discussion, Marty, that that we may be having, can 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 we reflect back on this? And just one of the things I was going to suggest, but I think maybe the discussion we've had on town meeting when we get to the zoning piece, I think delaying town meeting may have alleviated the the issue and the timeframe I was looking at. I was going to ask a suggestion of the board. So.
Relating to office hours or it's something else?
Well, something else for that date.
Oh, I see. I see.
Yeah. So could we come back to this discussion after the zoning piece? Because again, it may resolve itself and it may not be an issue at the same day.
Marty?
Thank you.
Was that you, Sam?
Yeah. One other issue, Chelsea and I talked about publicity for office hours. We think that there probably is a better way to advertise that in terms of more outreach in a variety of ways through the blog and other kinds of things. Because clear that, you know, we had two people, as Chelsea mentioned, and the prior history actually tended to generate a little more feedback than that historically. So anything that we can do, maybe Mark Vanessa could think about ideas to pump up the publicity for that. Maybe even putting a banner on the front of the website, town website on that day, for example, or day before day and that day, the office hours tomorrow night, office hours tonight kind of thing to.
And even all the all good points and maybe even listed as a meeting.
Yep. It was listed on the the meeting page, I guess.
Yes.
It was. Okay.
Which is good. In fact, highlighted there, but maybe even, you know, higher up in the publicity or visibility structure there somehow.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know if on that point, I don't know if you had a chance to to see the advertisement for office hours that Katie Berry put together where Sam and Chelsea looked dashing, you know, in their individual pictures, you know. And and I told Katie, I said, you know, you've raised the bar. I hope you have three other pictures, you know, of just these great shots of all the other Selectmen. So I just want to give a shout out to Katie, who did a really nice job putting that together for advertising. We can make sure that gets out a little more.
He's a wizard.
And she put me to shame because I used to do the prior one. So I claim defeat.
Well, did I hear that she made you look good, Sam?
Actually, there's a picture from my eighth grade yearbook.
It was Sam next to trees. I didn't know you got that close to trees.
And then the the final item is one that 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 didn't hit the 48 hours, 48-hour limit, a matter related to Youth and Family Services. And is this you, Chelsea, or Mr. Stivers? And Chelsea contacted me and I made the decision that it was rather than reposting an agenda, that it fit into that category that we referenced earlier of one that came up within 48 hours and is appropriate to discuss as part of a member's report tonight. So Chelsea?
So I'm the Youth and Family Services liaison. So I've been working with Sarah on kind of going some through some learning curves on understanding their department. And they're doing an exercise where they're hiring a consultant to do a community needs assessment and strategic plan for Youth and Family Services. And they're getting a group together of some stakeholders to to kind of vet through that plan. And it's an eight-week process. So they're looking for board representation for that. And so I wanted to bring it to this board to see how we want to handle reach outs like this in the future, if it should be the liaison that kind of takes the initiative and then reports back to the this board, or if we actually kind of want to go through a process to identify someone some other way from participating for participation from the board.
And Chelsea, could I add on to that a minute?
Sure.
Youth and Family Services reached out to both me and Chelsea to participate in this. Chelsea is a liaison and I think, as many of you know, I've actually been following them closely for a number of years back starting when I was on the advisory committee to understand what was going on there and to help them get organized in a way that supported some of the things that Sarah Castle wanted to do when she came as as director. So I've got a fair amount of history there. I think that was one of the reasons that they invited me as well. And so the question is, is that something that Chelsea does, both of us do? I don't think I should do it alone, certainly, but I'm interested in doing it. But if others think that it should be Chelsea, I'm fine with that, too. So looking for some guidance there.
I guess here's my here's my reaction. I don't think I don't think two folks from the board of Selectmen should do it just because of, I mean, what Brian and I ran into with the pilot stuff. I mean, with two of us there, there's 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 an there's an argument that it, you know, you're part of a subcommittee or you've become a subcommittee under yourselves. And there is and as a result, now, are these going to be, would this be, would would the meetings be publicly posted so that that issue would be alleviated? Or is this going to be a more of a confab type thing with with less formal processes for discussion, if you know?
I am not aware that they're that they are going to be made public, but I am not, I did not ask Sarah that question specifically.
Yeah, I don't know either. I think there's a chance they would be as members of the Youth Commission. I think they're likely to be involved, depending on how many of them are involved in it. So if that's the case, they got a quorum, they would need to post it. But I don't really know the exact answer to that either.
Marty, can I?
Yeah, the only the only other thing I was going to say is 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 I mean, I'm assuming they're doing the needs assessment, among other things, to see if they are properly staffed. And so that is, it's conceivable that the needs assessment, in fact, even likely that the needs assessment as a normal course, ends up with a recommendation from Youth and Family Services for either a new position or a restructuring of hours or something like that. And that's something that we would consider in terms of a recommendation that we make for town meeting. And I guess having our liaison participate doesn't trouble me because there's already a liaison relationship anyway. But I think if two of us, two members of the board were participating, that would it would at least create perception issues in terms of your those those two people dealing with the Youth and Family Service budget going forward. Anyway, so that's I've said my piece on that. Lisa, you wanted to weigh in.
Actually, you kind of just took where I was going as well, Marty.
Okay.
I think, you know, there's there's lots of opportunities within the board, with with members of the board that that may have an interest or have served on something. But, you know, we set up the liaison process and I think we need to allow that, the opportunity to work. So, well, I appreciate, Sam, I know you've been very involved with Youth and Family Services. I my personal opinion is, is we've created the liaisons for a reason. And if there's going to be information that comes back to the board, I would hope that it would come through the liaison.
And I don't want to get in the way of that. As I said, I'm fine with that, but just looking for some guidance from the board. So it sounds like it's Chelsea then, and that's fine with me.
Yeah. So I think I think the simple we don't need a vote, going back to some of the points. I will designate that our liaison to Youth and Family Services Going back to some of the points, I will designate that our liaison to Youth and Family Services um um serve the function on the, whatever they're calling it, but the assessment group um or or whatever the phraseology is.
Okay, and I'll be sure to include this on member reports as I have updates.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, anything else that didn't make the forty-eight hour deadline that that someone wants to raise? Okay. Um, on to the consent agenda. And um at least one member, um, B has to be held because we need to vote on those individually.
About the town administrator report?
Oh, my goodness, my goodness. Mark?
Sorry.
I was gonna say out of sight, out of mind, but I can see you right there.
When you became chair, Mr. Chairman, you did it two weeks in a row, two meetings in a row, and you haven't done it since, and I, it's, we've, we've been all good, and now all of a sudden, it's.
Oh, wow. All right, the town administrators' report. Roll, drumroll.
Members of the board, I will be quick because I don't want to get in the way of our eleven o'clock stop time. Um, just a couple of quick things. We've already covered the annual town meeting date earlier with with Mr. Semino. Uh, quick update on the IT manager uh position. Um, we currently are re-advertising for the position. Uh, Mrs. Hale has been directing the um, the uh, the search and the interview committees. Um, and um, you know, they've done a nice job, but we just have not found the right fit. We did have two potential finalists, one who withdrew from the process, and I think one who is just not the right fit to um to lead that department. So we have been, uh, we have re-advertised. I know uh Mrs. Hale has been working um with with Matt Probst from the MTC. Um, he has been providing the technology support. Uh, and I will say that the Tom LaFlamme has has helped out when it came to uh some of the finalists um is as well, and helping with with some guidance on that. Um, hopefully, we can get somebody in this position fairly quickly. We've been holding things together. Uh, I will acknowledge Tim Davis has been helping out quite a bit managing the Zoom um and and making sure that everything gets scheduled, everything uh gets um uh gets hosts. And uh, and I know the clerk's office has also been checking with people, and they've made posts on that to make sure we don't have any Zoom issues. So fingers crossed for the number of meetings we do, everything has been going okay. But, you know, we we do need somebody in the position, but unfortunately, I don't just want somebody in the position. We need the right person, the position to continue what started with um with Mr. LaFlamme. Um, secondly, uh, just a quick budget update. Um, sometimes you have good budget days, sometimes you have bad budget days in terms of news. Um, right now, as we currently sit, I was chatting with Brian Ballantyne. Um, we are sitting at approximately an eight-point-four-four percent tax increase with the budget as it's existing. Um, a couple of items that driving that number, the K to eight assessment, uh, the K to eight budget for the school. Um, we had that at approximately a three-point-nine percent increase. I believe the increase that the school committee um is approving or has approved uh is about a three-point-one-three percent increase. Uh, that's about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars less than what we were carrying in the budget. Um, with the um health um insurance, uh, we have gotten a rate hold from Fallon. That's about one-third of our benefit plans for health insurance. Um, we're expecting that uh Tufts is going to be giving us hopefully similar news. Uh, it's going to be probably the first week in February when that information comes back, according to our health advisors. And also, we're seeing about uh an eighty-thousand-dollar uh reduction in the number that we were carrying for Worcester County Retirement. So all in all, that's just under two-hundred thousand dollars um in savings uh in in health and retirement. The other shoe is, we did have a nice meeting with ASABET to talk about their budget. Um, we have four additional students next year. And with the reduction in out-of-district placements, uh, which helps to reduce the assessment to the member communities, that's probably gonna affect us somewhere in the range of a hundred-thousand-dollar increase in the ASABET assessment. Um, we're waiting on final numbers from them. Hopefully, that number gets trimmed a little bit. But, you know, it it's not going to be a tremendous amount that it gets trimmed. Uh, that's, that's something that we're going to have to fit into the budget. So, you know, we we have dropped down the increase a little bit. If insurance can come down all the way uh for Tufts as well as uh as it did for Fallon, you know, that could be another, you know, a total of about three-hundred thousand dollars uh total savings in health and health insurance that we um versus what we've budgeted. So we could see a reduction there. So it's an ongoing process. We have been, uh, the exercises, the selectmen have requested. Um, that information has been coming in. There's a couple of stragglers. Um, you're listening to one of them. And uh, I will be, you know, getting that information in, and we'll take a look at what some of those, um, some of those requests look like and whether or not, you know, they do affect services or not. The um, the final item, uh, it's always good to leave on a, on a high note. I'm glad Mrs. Hale hasn't shut her screen off yet. Um, uh, I wanted to to make the board aware that um, that Vanessa has been selected um as the the twenty-twenty Trailblazer Award winner, which is a nationally recognized award. She was one of ten uh finalists uh around the country for promoting um women in local government and in the profession. And um, you know, she has done a great job with that um in in promoting um women in our organization and in her work with the um, with the um, I always say the uh the Mass Municipal Personnel Association because I don't like the new name. Um, and uh, and also with the um women, um, Women Leading Government, um, which has been a a fairly new organization uh that is established out of the managers' group. Uh, and she has been instrumental in that as well. Uh, great achievement. I'm not sure, I'm aware of anyone in Massachusetts who has won this award. Uh, I am, there was one other manager who was a finalist um and and didn't make it all the way. And I think it's, it's really, um, it's really neat to to have Vanessa be recognized for this um and for what she's done. So I just wanted to uh thank her and just to um, you know, crow a little bit about, you know, the fact that uh that she's been the recipient. So thank you for what you do.
Congratulations, Vanessa.
Congratulations, that's great stuff.
She's not as red as when I did a personnel board, so that's good. She's getting used to it.
All right, Mr. Town Administrator, you done?
I am done, thank you.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda. We're gonna hold B because we're gonna vote on those items individually just because of um uh attendance um for them. So are there any holes on A, C, D, or E?
A.
Okay. That's it? All right, I move that we approve consent agenda items C, D, and E.
Second.
Discussion none. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is a unanimous. All right, A, open session minutes.
Yes. So I'm just sorry, I didn't write down the line number, so one second. Um. Okay, line number two sixty-seven. Um, CPA should be A F G.
Say that again?
CPA. In line two sixty-seven.
Yep.
Should be A F G.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. With that, um, edit, um, I move to approve the open session mi- minutes from January five, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion none. Ms. Brascio?
Abstain.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. That passes. Uh, execu- executive session minutes for November ten, twenty-twenty. Discussion? No, all right. I will move to approve the November ten, twenty-twenty executive session minutes.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Brascio?
Abstain.
All right, Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Uh, November ten, twenty-twenty is approved, four with one abstention. Now, December fifteen, um, twenty-twenty, any discussion?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, December fifteen, um, there's one item in there about um liability, so.
Go, uh, can we discuss this now? Do we need to, uh? Yeah, no, I, um, why don't we, why don't we put off the um December fifteen, twenty-twenty minutes to the next meeting? And Sam, if you could um get a red line, uh.
Or blue line?
Concise. Mr. Purple, and we can have it sent out, okay?
Blue line is more popular nowadays than red.
All right.
I like blue.
We want to, we want to just schedule, you know, for an executive session on the next meeting to put these on to discuss?
Sure.
Okay.
Is it, is it just a single thing, Sam?
It is very tiny, yeah.
All right. Um, all right, well, this, if we can, either way, it'll be quick. Okay. Uh, so January five, twenty-twenty-one, any discussion? No, all right, I move to approve the executive session minutes from January five, twenty-twenty-one.
So approve and release, is that the motion, or is it just approve?
We're just approving at this point, correct?
But it says approve and release.
Approve and, approve and release.
Oh, I'm sorry, approve and release, I'm sorry. Uh, for January five. Um, so that's the motion, approve and release.
Second.
All right, discussion none. Ms. Brascio?
Abstain.
Um, Mr. uh, Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye for uh with one abstention. Uh, all right, that is it for the consent agenda. Other matters properly before the board. Uh, downtown initiative, Ms. Brascio?
All right, um, if I could, um, Vanessa or Katie, share my screen. I think it's easier to just go through this because I, there's been a a couple minor changes since it was sent to the board. So um if I could have screen share, then we could just go through them.
You should be able to do that now. Do you see the green button?
I do.
Okay.
All right, hold on one second. Let me make sure I have the right document up. And I do. All right, let me go back up to the top. Thank you, Vanessa. So the document that was in the packet um was reflective of the comments and suggestions from Adam Costa, who was the um attorney for um uh, under the grant to to review this. So Adam and Judy Barrett had both reviewed these. Um, Vanessa, while we're discussing this, it might be pertinent. I believe Julie Conley is in the audience, if we could bring her over as well. So one of the first suggestions Adam had, which you see in blue, is he suggested renaming the district. He said that uh he felt it was, um, he cautioned naming it the Downtown Business Village District uh it as a source of confusion. That was his concern. So one of the things I'm going to ask of the board tonight, what is to come up with a new district name for it? I know um EDC, one of them, was, one of the suggestions was just calling it Downtown District, um, leaving out the Village District and just calling it Downtown District. It leads to less confusion. Um, I don't know if the board has any thoughts on that. Um.
I like Town Center District.
Uh, the the concern with Town Center District is, is where the post office is, Sam?
Yep.
That's called Town Center. So there was some, some confusion. I know Judy and Adam both like Town Center District as well. I know EDC was concerned about the confusion. Um. So, Sam, if if that's what your vote is, then, you know.
Yeah, that's my preference is Town Center. I fully understand the Town Center name issue there, but uh seems to me that's, you know, more appropriate, but downtown can work, too.
Okay, anyone else, Chelsea?
I think Downtown District's fine. I can see how Town Center would be confusing, so I think we should stay away from that.
Okay, Mr. Shea?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with downtown. It's fewer words, too, which is good.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so it looks like um downtown it is, so I'll go through and make those changes um as we go through the document. The second change um that was added was, again, it was a name change here, but also um I had included in the packet, which I I didn't bring up. Um, I actually went into the zoning code one-seven-four-dash-three, and I made the change that Adam suggested, which was basically naming Town Center District um and um S K and um then making K at the current K and L into L and M. So that was, that was in the packet. So I don't know that the board necessarily needs to have any comment, unless you have comment on that? None? I'll move on.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, the next suggestion that Adam had was to, uh, actually to the Attorney Costa, excuse me, is to uh get rid of B and just sequentially number these. Um, also, Adam and um Judy had uh agreed on some additional language, which you see here as well.
Fewer words, I'm in favor.
Okay, so, uh, okay. What you see in red here is what uh I had asked the board to approve at the last meeting you did. We struck dog kennels. We added twelve units in, which which these were the consensus items from the November meeting. Um, also, you'll notice under six here, um, the consensus at the meeting was point-three-five and point-five-oh. So you had approved that at the last meeting as well to adjust it back to those. And um, one of the things that that was agreed under the consensus was the affordable housing piece. So I'm just adding it back in. When I had given it to the board as redlined, I didn't include, this is what was originally in from Judy with just changing it. It was originally six units, and we changed it to eight. So this asterisk language is actually the language that's going to sit in the bylaw that was supplied originally by Judy back in version three. So, um, and again, the the, that was one of the changes that I had asked at the last meeting as well, but you didn't have the additional verbiage. So I don't know, um, if you guys want to read that, if you have any questions, but that was in a prior version uh that we discussed actually at the um um, November meeting. So if there's no questions, I'll move on from that. Nope?
I didn't know if we, we wanted to wait till the end for discussion. I just wanted to make one comment, but if you want me to pull dock to whip onto everything, I can do that.
Um, no, Julie, that's fine. Is is this comments relative to the changes that EDC made? I was gonna do that at the end.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, no, I had planned on doing that because there's, there's, there's three talking points after going through this, before I ask the board to vote. No, you're welcome, thank you. And you'll notice um in the prior version, um, Judy had language, and Adam Costa had a question specific to, I'm just gonna pull up his, his, his question here. He said, consistent with other comments, he thought it should be a separate district. So um earlier, towards the end of last week, Attorney Costa and Judy Barrett got together and agreed on this version, uh, this verbiage to add a Town Center Plan Approval as ten-point-two within the zoning code. So it addressed their issues, and that was in the packet that you have.
Lisa, can I just ask?
Yes.
Sorry, Lisa, can I ask a question on that one?
Absolutely.
So it says the Planning Board may adopt design guidelines and apply, apply them to major site plan approval applications.
Uh huh.
Um, so had, I guess the may adopt design guidelines. Um, do we know where Planning Board stands on that verbiage?
So I actually spoke to um Sarah uh just before our meeting. Planning Board hasn't started the process yet of design guidelines. Uh, they are going to adopt, but currently, as it stands today, there are currently none um that they have approved, and I believe that's why they put may in there. Uh, on the off chance that this may go to town meeting without the guidelines being done, it still allows the opportunity.
So if Planning Board does come up with guidelines prior to town meeting, then do you think the intent would be to change that verbiage to say the Planning Board has adopted?
Correct.
Or something, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can still change that prior to town meeting?
We can change it prior to town meeting, Chelsea. Um, once the um, actually, Sarah and I, I kind of walked through this as well. Um, once the warrant is printed, and now that we know that town meeting is delayed, um, if it is after the warrant has been printed, it would have to be amendment on town meeting floor. But I I I think it's going to be important to me personally. But I, I, I think it's going to be important to me personally, I think it's going to be important to the voters to know whether this has been taken care of or not through Planning Board.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Lisa, a quick question before.
Go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead, somebody else?
In paragraph F here, that's on the screen now.
Yes.
Just so I'm clear, is this is going to get changed to Downtown District?
Yes, all of the Downtown Business Village District, I'll go through the document, Brian, I'll change it.
All references to that could change, thank you.
It's going to be Downtown District going forward, yes, and I'll recirculate that.
I had a similar type of question, can you go back to the previous pack paragraph that you had up? Is, is that also going to say Downtown District?
It will throughout the document, and, and I'll recirculate that to the board as well, once the changes are made.
Okay, got it, thanks.
So, that's where we stand on this, I'm going to come back to this. So, there's a couple of other things I'd, I'd like the board to consider tonight. One is EDC had three changes, potential changes that they would like the board to consider. So, I'm going to go to those, Julie, and I will let you explain, I know the first one was the FAR. Oh, you're muted, Julie, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Lisa, and, and thank you to everybody for, for continuing to work on this. I, I know we're getting really close there, there were just a couple of things that we wanted to point out. Honestly, I think the, the only one that I, you know, feel, feel strongly about really is the, is the maximum floor area ratio. And I know we spent some time talking about this in our, in our meeting back right before Thanksgiving, and we agreed upon, the, the general consensus was that the floor area ratio was maximum .35. And just to, as a refresher on what that means, it means that for every, you know, 1,000 square feet, only 350 square feet can be the footprint of the building. Where that gets complicated is if we have a multi-story building. So, all of a sudden, that footprint of the building starts to look very small and compared to the, compared to the actual plot of land that it sits on, if we have a two or, or three-story building. So, we, as many towns do, we talked about, okay, well, we'll have a maximum amount and then allow, you know, a, allow the Planning Board to be able to buy special permit, allow it to go even higher. So, in this case, we said a maximum .5. I just did a, a quick scan of a couple of other towns, and that seems a little low, and that's why you'll see Lisa's red line is, is from, or, or, I, I know these are our changes, but those actually lined up with the suggestions that, that Judy Barrett and Adam Costa had, had provided to us as well, just because what we had come to a consensus on in, in, back in November seemed a little bit low compared to our contemporaries. From a quick look that, like Westboro, for example, actually is a 1.2, which is more than one, which is a lot of, allows it obviously to have multiple stories and, and to have a larger footprint on a space. And, and from some research I've done, you know, in, in a downtown area, it makes sense to have a little bit of a higher of a FAR. I know we want to be, you know, we're, we're being very protective, and we want to make sure we have green space and, as part of this as well. And I, I'm not even, I think I'm necessarily want to reduce, or, or, sorry, increase the .35, but I'm wondering if it makes sense to increase the .5 by special permit, to allow the Planning Board some flexibility to make that FAR a little bit higher if the right project presents itself. Again, if it's a two or three-story building, having a .5 FAR means that on a two-story building, only a quarter of the available land can be used as a footprint for the space. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that and, and just raise that for discussion one more time and see if, if, if people had thoughts on that.
So, I'll, I'll just add on, on that, that obviously the .35 and the .50, just for context, was what was reached at the consensus meeting. If, if, there is opportunity, if the board feels strongly at this point to leave it at what was reached at the consensus meeting, through the, my understanding is through the public hearing process, this could also be raised again for discussion with the Planning Board. So.
Lisa?
Yes.
As you may recall, my consensus at the consensus meeting was .7. So, I
That is correct.
Strongly support .7, I'd even go higher actually, but I think the Planning Board is well positioned to make sure that crazy things don't happen with this process, and so I'm happy to give them the flexibility.
Okay, Mr. Shea?
My comment, I don't disagree with the arguments that Julie made and that Sam just made, but out of respect for that meeting that we had in November, at this point, I would keep it at what the consensus was and then make the arguments during the Planning Board public hearings to modify it at that point.
Okay, Mr. Healy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Brian, and, and I'm, I'm just, I'm curious why you couldn't, under maximum floor area ratio, have a little A comma for single-story buildings, .35 and .50 for multiple-story buildings have different numbers. Why couldn't you do that?
I don't see why we can't, I don't know that I've seen any done that in other zoning bylaws that I've reviewed, but I think that's logical, and that doesn't mean that it can't be done, and I, I think that's actually perfectly reasonable because I think that, that's where it starts to get disconcerting, if you have a three-story building, that means that your building is very, very small on your plot of land, which in most instances makes sense, but maybe doesn't make sense in that small area that's the Downtown District, or whatever we call it. But I, I'd be amenable to, to that as well, to having a different standard for something that's more than one story and a stricter standard for, for a one-story building.
So, I guess, I, I guess it sounds like, since Lisa, Brian, and I all voiced that we want to stay consistent with the November meeting, that I, it, that, that sounds like at best it's three to two, maybe more than that, to keep it as it is, but, but there'll be ample opportunity, I mean, I, I would, I would think particularly since, again, it just, it, it, it's kind of odd to me that if you build two stories, that that can basically be a divisor of two to the, to the, the floor area ratio, that doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me. But maybe I'm missing, missing something in the zoning world.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why a lot of towns have a floor area ratio that's actually more than one, because it allows for, you know, for that to happen.
Yeah.
So, what, what I would suggest, Marty, is, is certainly, that's a question we can ask Judy, I mean, we've now bought some time with town meeting. You know, we, I, I guess I'll stop there for now, but I, 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 I think we have the opportunity to finalize a document tonight, a draft. I'm not saying finalize a document to move forward to Planning Board, but, but I'll, I'll get into that a, as we move forward because there's, there's other questions as well. So, Chelsea, did you have a comment on this?
I do, I have a question and a comment. So, is there a ratio somewhere in here that I'm just not seeing? That, that is not the maximum, maximum floor area ratio, but rather like first floor to lot size?
No. No.
So, that, does that just not normally appear in zoning bylaws?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess not, and I'm not a zoning bylaw expert. What I know is from just my work on this committee and from speaking with, with Judy and, and from kind of doing, you know, just looking at towns that we consider contemporaries and what their bylaws say, and I haven't seen that. Some towns don't have any FAR, that, you know, they don't have a specific number, it's just not a way that they measure it. They, you know, they make that, you know, they make determinations by project. You know, we as a town decided that, you know, we wanted to go this route, and I, I don't think it's the wrong choice. But, but, but I, but, but, you know, back to what Marty said, I don't think that there's a reason why we couldn't say, okay, if it's a one-story, it's this, or, or having some other sort of calculation that calculates the footprint as opposed to the, the number of square feet, you know, on, on all stories of the space. That's something we can certainly bring back to Judy and Adam, who have, you know, a lot more experience and, and working with different towns, and, and, you know, maybe they can have, they have another option. We discussed this with, a lot with them, and I haven't heard them bring up a different option so far, so, but if, you know, we haven't asked this question in this particular way, so I'm sure we can do that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we, we can take care of that.
And then my second, I guess my second one is a question too, so procedurally, if we agree to this document tonight at the .35 and the .5, then it would go to Planning Board for hearings to start?
Not necessarily, Chelsea, a, as we go through, I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer the board some options and some suggestions. So, because now we've bought additional time.
Okay, so, then how would we bring, how would, I guess, how, I'm with Brian and Marty and yourself, Lisa, on that I don't think we should make a change outside of the November meeting with kind of everybody that agreed to those, those, this FAR. So, then would we go attend a Planning Board hearing, or are you going to talk about other options before that?
So, I mean, we, we as a board, I mean, again, I, I think that, as, as I said, this could be brought up during the Planning Board hearings, it's certainly something that EDC could bring up and advocate for, the board could even certainly bring up and advocate for. As far as, is this the document that's going to, to make it to Planning Board? It certainly could be, I mean, with the change in town meeting, Chelsea, we've actually bought some time. Planning Board was going to be sending out for public hearings on February 8 on all of the warrant articles, because they have a specific timeframe, you know, that they have to hold the hearings prior to town meeting. And we've just bought a couple of months, so, I mean, I, I think we have time to, you know, get some feedback from Judy and see if, A, it's something that maybe the feedback makes sense, and we do want to entertain before we give a final document to Planning Board.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, go ahead, Sam.
I absolutely don't object to moving this forward as written here. So, my, my goal, as I think I said last time we talked about this, I think it's important to keep this process moving. And I've got a longer list of things that I hope to have another swing at the Planning Board to that extent. So, I think that the key thing is to let, let it go and continue to get feedback and input and ready to reach closure on it as quickly as possible, so. I'm not
Okay.
Lisa, following on that, I mean, there's absolutely no reason why, again, the process we set up, and it was a perfectly reasonable process, was to get everybody together at a couple of meetings, the, the, the last one was November, and to work through and get consensus on a number of, of items, some of which were contentious, and we, we, we found a way to, 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 to get through it. The fact that we pushed a, a document forward that represents that consensus that was reached in November, doesn't mean that we even as a board can't take a vote saying that, upon reflection, that we, 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 we now support a, a change in this item 6, and even put it in an explanation as, as to why, and we can do it in writing, we can appear at the Planning Board, and, and I just don't think that, I, that doesn't strike me as a big issue. But I'd, I'd, I'd like to say, stay true to the process and the consensus that was reached in November for what we pushed forward to the Planning Board, that's my view.
So, the only, the only other option I was going to offer to the board, Marty, it's one of the four additional points I was going to bring up to the board was, you know, the, the board has received feedback from someone in the downtown that felt they didn't have enough information. I was going to suggest, prior to giving this document to Planning Board, that the Board of Selectment and EDC host a forum. We invite the stakeholders for the Downtown, well, Downtown District now that, now that we know what it's called. You know, we, we invite them to a, a forum, we explain the project, what the project will mean, we give them the opportunity. My, my fear is always, Marty, that someone is going to bring something up that we may have missed, we may have thought of. And by having a forum prior to the public hearings with Planning Board, we may be able to answer a question that may come up at Planning Board in advance. As well, it, it gives all of the stakeholders the opportunity. I know EDC, I, I talked to EDC about this, well, I talked to Julie about this, and she brought it back to EDC as well. That was the only reason I was going to suggest we don't bring this document forward in case something gets brought up prior to the public hearings that we may need Judy to address, or, or maybe there won't be, you know, maybe everything will be fine and, and, you know, all the questions will be answered. But I would hate to, to give Planning Board a document that, you know, may change based on some feedback from the stakeholders within the Downtown District. That was, that was the only reason why. I am ready to move this forward myself, I mean, I think we've made the changes, we've reached the consensus, we've gone through most of the items, there's just still two other outstanding items we need to go through before I think we can actually take a vote. But that was the only reason why I was going to ask the board to consider, I, I think a forum is important. You know, at, at this stage of the game, we moved very quickly from October through the November meeting. We had two, two meetings, and, you know, we got a, a lot of groundwork done, we reached a lot of consensus. But I just think the, the public, again, I, I've heard from two other people as well that said that they, they weren't aware of that all this was going on, and, and again, there's always going to be people that, that aren't necessarily tuned in and aware, but this gives us an opportunity to reach out to them so someone doesn't stand up at town meeting or the, the Planning Board public hearings and say that they weren't aware. So, that, that was my only reason for asking the board to delay.
I'll, I'll let, here's my reaction to that.
Yep.
The problem is that, that, in my view, I don't have a problem with a forum, but, but the, the, the notion that we would have a, have a, an additional forum that could possibly change what we agreed was a consensus document from November, it just seems inconsistent to me. I, 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 I see them as separate, there's the document that was reached upon, I mean, a number of noticed meetings. I understand that, that, that not everyone gets notice of every meeting that's posted and the like, but those were noticed meetings, they were, they were targeted for reaching consensus on a document to get to the Planning Board, so the Planning Board could hold public hearings with the opportunity for everybody to weigh in. And, and I think that's the process we should continue with. Now, the idea of holding a forum so that we can educate and, and perhaps in the same way that we, we might change the maximum floor area ratio as a board recommendation, notwithstanding the document that was forwarded to Planning, I think that's fine. But I, I just, I'm wary about, about a forum designed to potentially change a consensus document that we'd essentially be changing on our own, that it no longer is a consensus document, it's what we think should be changed based on what we heard here in our own forum. It just seems, it seems apples and oranges to me. Anyway, that's my thought.
And I think, I think that then has the potential to delay the public hearing process through the Planning Board. If a document is presented to them that differs greatly from the consensus document that was discussed. Personally, I think that where, you know, if, if we've finalized this consensus document, I think, let's get it into Planning Board's hands, let's start the process. I mean, yes, town meeting is delayed, but I think the original schedule also probably called for this getting into Planning Board's hands well before now also, so. I think let's, let's keep the process moving, in my opinion.
So, let me ask another question then, because two of the other items that I was going to ask the board to consider were things we really didn't discuss during the consensus. One is during the two meetings that we had, we really didn't talk about the map, and I know that there's been a recommendation to add one parcel to the Downtown District from a, a homeowner, landowner downtown. And so, would the board be willing to consider that as we bring the documents forward? Because the map is included in that.
I'll weigh in, my reaction's the same, I, I, I don't have a problem having a separate vote. I just really don't, I mean, we worked so hard with, with a number of different boards to come up with, with a document, understanding that that thing could change based on public hearings and otherwise. I, I just, I, I, you know, I, I feel mule-headed about this. I, I just, I, I, you know, I'm, I, I feel mule-headed about this and, and, and that we not, uh, other than, other than, you know, edits and cleaning it up, et cetera, not change what the substantive consensus was from November.
And Lisa?
Yes, Sam.
I, um, I guess I, I agree with Marty in the sense that I'd feel differently if, if there weren't another opportunity for public input. But I think the normal course of events for these things is for planning board to have the hearing, solicit input from any interested party, including those folks who, for whatever reason, may feel that they hadn't had an opportunity to provide input yet. And I think that it's appropriate for us and everybody else to work hard to advertise those hearings. And things could change substantially at the planning board hearings as they hear and listen to things. So it seems to me that collecting all of that through the, the planning board process, which is the usual process for this kind of thing, as a matter of fact. And it works, I think reasonably well typically. So there is still ample opportunity for anyone with interest in this to make proposals and try to convince people to, to make edits to whatever the draft is. So I think that it's better to keep it moving and, uh, work hard at the planning board process.
Go ahead, Julie.
I just wanted to add, um, you know, I, 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 I support having the forum. I'm not heartbroken one way or the other. And I agree, you know, there could be some duplicity between that and the, and the planning board hearings. But I just want to note, you know, we've, we've said from the beginning, every, you know, this has to be really transparent. And I know Lisa had mentioned and others had mentioned too, that they, they didn't know what was going on. And I think particularly right now in times of COVID, people are distracted. And, you know, yes, we've had many multiple, uh, multiple meetings, you know, our, our joint meeting, the board of select meetings, the EDC meetings that have all discussed these different issues over the course of the past few months. And yes, they're posted, they're public. I don't know about you guys, I haven't noticed a lot of public participation, at least in the form of comments coming in when we've had those meetings, public comments. So I'm not convinced that, um, this, this real stakeholder is here, where the people downtown, where we're getting these questions from, really understand what's going on. And my concern is that there's going to be, what, you know, it's going to be announced as planning board hearing on this and that there's, people are going to get worried about it. So I think having something that sort of explains not just here's the bylaw, but here's why this is important. Here's why we went through this process to come together. Here's what we agreed on collectively, but you're the ones, you're particularly the abutters and the neighbors, um, in, in the downtown neighborhood. You know, we want to make sure we hear from you and that you're involved with, obviously everyone invited, but, you know, specifically targeting them and getting their feedback and, you know, having been working on this downtown committee, um, you know, the downtown initiative for three years now. We've had, I think, five public forums, obviously none this year, but several over the past couple of years. And we've, we've found them to be, um, you know, sometimes contentious. People come and they're worried and they have questions, but, but overall really i- i- interesting in, in making sure we're thinking about it holistically and understanding people's concerns. But also just to show transparency. So that, you know, when it's dropped on as a, as a public hearing at a planning board, it's not the first they're hearing about it. And having this opportunity to specifically invite the stakeholders before what is the article is presented, I think is, is a opportunity we shouldn't pass up. But, you know, obviously whatever the board decides, I'm happy with, but that, just wanted to add that.
So, yes, I'm sorry, Chelsea, go ahead.
So is the intent of the forum to, um, notify abutters that there's a, a forum? So that everybody, everybody within a certain, um, area is aware that it's going on?
For the forum? Yes. It, it is. It's, it's to make sure that, that everybody has an ample opportunity to learn about the, the changes that we're looking to make downtown, as well as it'll be open to the public as well. You know, uh, it would be advertised that way. But I think that the plan is for the direct abutters to the project and maybe within, you know, uh, 50 yard radius or, or whatnot. And it's easy enough to get that list. I believe EDC already has that list actually. You know, to send them the information packet that the board had reviewed prior. All the changes that we talked about have been made. You know, to, to give them a little bit of additional information where it affects them. You know, prior to inviting them.
So, um, could I make a suggestion maybe?
Absolutely.
If we, um, cause I, I hear what Marty's saying with, that we, and, and you at the forefront have put a ton of work into getting, uh, a final document to go before the hearing process, right? So, um, if we could host the hearing at the same time, if we vote on this document tonight, get it over to planning board and then hear what the residents have to say at the forum. And then as part of the hearing process, the board votes on anything that we want to bring forward that comes out of the hearing to the hearing process. And that way we know whether this board has consensus around, um, what the residents have to say. They have a platform to talk, speak to the board, um, as well as EDC or whoever else wants to be at the hearing. I'm sorry, the forum. And then, um, we can either support that to go to planning board.
Okay. So, and, and again, I, I, I hear, I think Marty has said that, Sam has said the, the same thing, Chelsea. So that's fine. Um, my only other question is then, there, there was another question that was presented regarding the split lots. And I think, um, that's probably another thing that we didn't discuss with planning board. So that might actually be best left to the, the planning board discussion. So, um, what I'm hearing from everybody is, you know, we have this document, we, we've reviewed it. The, um, attorney Costa has viewed it. We've come up with a name that, um, I'll go through and make the changes to the, to the downtown district. And, you know, we'll be ready to send it to planning board is, is in, in any other, um, edits or changes will go through the planning board phase or will come from the board prior to planning board, but the board wants to get this moving forward, correct?
Lisa?
Yes.
Question, if I may?
Yes.
I actually looked, I couldn't find Adam Costa's original, uh, mark of the, uh, draft in the comments. It strikes me that this draft does not include all of Adam's comments. He's, he had a long list of things.
It, it did actually, Sam?
It did?
It did. So if, at the last meeting, uh, I'm just pulling up Adam's comments real quick. So at the last meeting, um, one of Adam's biggest comments was the name of the document. Then he talked about changing the, let me go back actually. So he.
I don't, I don't need the, the list, Lisa. If you say that it picked up his comments, that's fine. I just couldn't find his original thing. I was gonna take a look, but.
I'm happy to forward it to you, Sam. Reforward it.
If you would please, I couldn't find it. So if that stuff is in there, that's good. And I appreciate the feedback. And I'm fine with a forum idea too, frankly. The more input we get, the better. Let's keep moving.
Okay. So that being said, I guess I would be looking for a vote from the board to move, um, the final document minus the correcting the district name throughout, which I'll, I'll recirculate to the board as well. Once that's done, to planning board to start the, the hearing process and then we'll move forward with the forums. And any other questions that we may, that may arise and come before the board.
All right, I will move that we, um, recommend sending as a consensus document that grew out of our hearings in the, the fall. The revised zoning article, um, as written with the amendments that Lisa has referenced. How's that for a mouthful? Second. Oh, so I moved, you seconded discussion. None. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. It is unanimous. It's on its way to the planning board.
Awesome. Julie, thank you and thank EDC for, for all the work they've done as well. Thank you. Thank you. Time, you know, uh, and hopefully we're on to great things.
Thank you so much. So are we doing the forum or no?
Yes.
Yeah. And we're gonna, we're gonna set a date for that?
Can we take one? Go ahead, Lisa.
Yep. So originally my suggestion was going to be based on the schedule. You want to do it before the planning board hearings. So, I was gonna tentatively suggest the 26th because EDC has the list and i- is ready to bring something, you know, to do a joint forum. But I'm gonna check with Sarah tomorrow just to make sure that they're gonna stay on the, the February 8th date. Cause Marty, that was why I asked about the 26th. Originally, we, we talked about maybe doing it then, but I think it makes sense to see how this is gonna alter planning board schedules as well. I don't know that there's gonna be the rush for them to do the hearings because obviously we want to do it in advance.
And I, I actually think, I mean, i- 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 if, if they've got some additional flexibility, I think folding in a forum, I don't think we're gonna get 100 people. I don't think we're gonna get 20 people. I think we're, we're, we're gonna get a, a handful, maybe slightly more than a handful. And I would even suggest doing it i- at our February 5th meeting.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
That's got the virtue of me before the planning board meeting.
That's great.
So from experience, and as I said, we've done several of these. You're, you're right. In the first couple of forums that we had, we only got, we had about 25 people total and probably half of them at least were, you know, you guys and, you know, other interested committees. However, um, once we started doing as opposed, because initially we're advertising just, you know, through myself bro and through uh, email, whatever. But once we, the, the first time we did a, um, targeted mailing where we actually put things in people's mailboxes, we got a lot of people. We had over 50 people, if I remember correctly. We pretty much packed the entire, um, room of, of the, the hearing room. So I don't know which, how that changes now that everything's virtual. I don't know if that helps or hinders. But I wouldn't assume that it's going to be nothing. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but, but I would, uh, it could be, it could be a good number of people. It's a, a topic that a lot of people I think are interested in, particularly the abutters.
And, and if that happens, that's great. I, I, I still think I'd try to do it on the 5th.
Okay. Actually, Marty, I think Vanessa said it's the 2nd. Yeah.
Am I keep getting the date wrong? Oh, the 5th is the, okay, whatever.
That would be a Friday night.
The 5th is the Friday. Yeah, no, we won't do it on Fri, although like, like a Friday night is different these days.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you to the board.
All right, thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Lisa, are we all set on the zoning?
That's it. I will, I will do the edits tonight and, and get it circulated. I'll, I'll circulate it. I'll get it to Mark where he can circulate it to the board. And just to make sure that we're good.
And, and I guess the, I, actually the other, you, you know what? It, it, it is, I think it's worthwhile to do this just to get it as part of the record. Although the, the date is to be determined that, um, I move that the, the, um, Board of Selectment commit to having a, um, a public forum, giving the abutters an opportunity to weigh in on the downtown district zoning changes.
Second.
Discussion, none. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski? Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. So we've done two things tonight. We've pushed the document to planning and we've committed to having a, a forum with the abutters. So I think that was the, the, the consensus of the room. So good. Excellent.
Thank you to everyone. And Marty, now you can go back to your, your office hours on the 26th.
Okay. All right. Uh, but you know, I'm gonna do it, no offense, Lisa, but you, you know, you're, you're an important, you know, statewide figure now. So Brian and I will do the, uh, the office hours on, uh, on Tuesday. You could do it the next time with Sam.
Perfect.
All right. All right. Next item is, um, boy, was I surprised by this document, the review of town contracted services. So I, I guess the main thing we want, at least I, again, trying to get a sense of, of, of what we've been talking about. The, the main thing going into this that we wanted to accomplish was a, to think about a process for soliciting bids for legal services. Correct?
No, all, all services actually, right?
I, I'm talking about just tonight. I mean, we, we talked about that more broadly, but for tonight, the focus was to, 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 to talk about a process on, for the legal services side of things. Fair enough? Okay. I'm gonna get to that in a second. The, but, but looking at this, at the, the, the list of contracted services, it is, I, I think, not tonight, but longer term, we've got a, I think we've got a slightly bigger project ahead of us. Because, um, the, 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 I use this word a lot. I think we need to get tighter with what we're doing with contracted services. Um, and make sure that, that we don't have a contract in one year. We keep going with the same person and so we don't do another contract. And I, I mean, that, that's, 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 that's dangerous from, uh, from a, a, a legal standpoint. But that's, that's, I think for a future discussion. But does, do people agree with me looking at this, that we need to sort of take a, a global view at the, the, the contract process and, and I, I, just looking at this, it seems to me we need to tighten it up. So.
Marty, I think that that's exactly right, but I think we also need to have an appropriate structure. As you look at this, I mean, I think there are some things that fall into the bucket of commodity kind of things that you want to look at every year typically. Other things that you might want to look at every several years or whatever. I think you need a performance evaluation process overlaid here, whether it's people or, uh, commodities or whatever you're buying.
Sam, I agree completely. Agree completely. All, all, all my, my only point was it's, it, it seems like a big, a bigger project than, than maybe we anticipated at the front end. So that's, but, but that's putting, that's putting the entire bucket to the side. And focusing on the, now it's interesting, Mark, you know, I, I see for town council, it's referenced that there's been rate letters and, and a, and a contract. How about the other lawyers that we use? I mean, I, obviously the insurance folks are covered by insurance policies and we don't contract with them. But how about like special town council and the like? Is that, is that not dealt with contractually?
Yeah, that's dealt with contractually. We have, we have letters, um, and, and like I said, there are some gaps in this. You know, in terms of, in terms of what we have, but, um, we do, um, we made an appointment for, um, me, Talman and Costa, special counsel, for example. They provided us, um, a rate letter, which the board had approved. And that has just turned into an annual appointment at this, at this time.
Okay. All right. So, so we've got town council and then we've got me, Talman and Costa, and they are, so that's an existing rate letter they have?
Yes.
Okay. And the same is true of Norris, Murray and Pellequin? That's an existing rate letter that they have?
Yes, and they do, and they, you know, and we appoint those on an annual basis, the same as town council.
Okay. And is the, so is the, I, I, I know what my view is, but is the, is, is the view of other members of the board that we should look at? Again, I, understanding that, that we, we want to look at other services as well, but that we want to look at all of the legal services that are provided to the town. Not just town council, not just special council, not just labor council, but we want to look at all of them and think about, whether or not we want to request bids for them and what the structure for that would be? Is that, am I correct in assuming that?
My view at least. And I, I don't know about bids per se, Marty, but I think you need to look at the overall thing. For example, Mark, I don't remember seeing on this list, the, the environmental specialist who's been working with CommCom here. She was, uh, Lasky, I think her name was maybe, she, she was, uh.
Rebecca, Rebecca Lacy, Sam.
I mean, every time I hire an attorney, I gotta do an engagement letter with them, sort of the full nine yards. And so I, I would hope that we're doing that kind of stuff with all these folks as well. But to me, it's a, it's an interesting question. Do we wind up, for example, looking at a firm that has all of the appropriate specialists included in the firm? Or what we appear to be doing, uh, you know, sort of as a particular issue arises, looking for the expert for that issue and contacting separately. I don't know the answer to that, but I think that we need to have a holistic view of that entire process. As opposed to a single town council, you know, person that lose sight of the other pieces that are part of the picture here.
All right. Sam, I'm gonna go around. Ms. Braccio, your thoughts?
I, I certainly think, Marty, it's, it's worth exploring. I mean, we, we talked about this a couple of years ago and, and I was on board with exploring the, the option. So that hasn't changed.
Okay. Um, Ms. Malinowski? Okay. Um, Ms. Malinowski?
So I think I have two questions for the special counsel and the labor council. There's no start dates there. So do we know when we first started using those two?
I'm gonna say special counsel, uh, Chelsea was probably around 2013. Um, they were brought in, um, they were brought in to help out with the, um, um, the, the lawsuit with the town in Northborough over the regional school. Um, so they were, you know, there was other counsel that was involved. They could no longer continue. We had to get additional counsel. And, um, me, Talman, and Costa was brought in. Jay Talman helped with that. Actually helped to save the town, um, several hundred thousand dollars in interest with the, with the, with the settlement agreement. I, I'm gonna look to Vanessa as to how long that Norris has been labor counsel.
It, it, that's been longer, I would say. Maybe, I can check certainly our files tomorrow, but it, it may be close to a dozen years since we changed our special counsel firms.
That's fine. I just wanted a general ballpark. Thank you. So, so Marty, I think, um, I think I'm open to looking to see what options exist. I guess a, a few questions for you, because you're the attorney here. So with town council, right now, we're with a one-man show, essentially. Um, and, and so what are, from your perspective, what are we looking for? Um, is there, is there something that you see, um, that we maybe would get with more of a middle-market firm? Um, or, or even a larger market firm? Like, can you kind of walk through kind of what the, the menu of options are? And, and are, are you looking for, um, a change in approach? So I get, this, this is speaking from a non-attorney. I'm just kind of looking for some guidance on kind of what, what the menu of options are, I guess.
Well, I mean, it's interesting. I mean, I mean, um, th- there's, there's two separate things. The, the, the main thing I'm, I'm, I'm looking for is, uh, um, a, a process where the town is getting, and this doesn't mean to suggest we haven't been, but the town is getting the best possible legal services for its money. And that can be, um, a, that come, can come from a large law firm. There are large law, large law firms that offer municipal council services. There are medium-sized, there are small-town, there are s- small, um, uh, firms. And, and there are single-firm shops that are, um, offer, you know, terrific services for municipalities. It, it's unusual for a single firm, and I think it's reflected here, a single-person firm, to be able to cover, um, the entire landscape of services that a town may want, which is one of the reasons presumably why there is a special labor, labor council, you know, a special counsel in an environmental area and the like. Obviously, with a medium-sized firm or a la- larger firm, they might be able to cover all of those services. So, again, what I think, the way I view my obligation to the town is, is exactly what I just stated. To make sure, um, that you're, that the town is getting the best possible legal services it can for its money. And I don't think there's any way you can know that without exploring the marketplace. And that's something we haven't done in a long while. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to explore the marketplace. And then, and what I was gonna do is, is say, Mark, I'm curious as to how other towns have, um, undertaking to bid, uh, legal services. In other words, do they do it? I mean, I could imagine doing it, um, as getting a bid for town council, getting a bid for labor council, getting a bid for environmental council, and see if, based on that expertise and who you're gonna get, that you, that you get the best possible service at a, at a particular price. I could see also doing that in conjunction with a larger bid request, which is to see if you could get firms that bid on the entire range of services that you're looking for. I don't know exactly. Uh, it, it's interesting, Chelsea, I am a lawyer. That being said, um, you know, most of my time has been spent in government practice. And one of the nice things about it is, I don't have to, I don't have to look for private clients. So I'm, I, I understand how it works, and I'm usually on the other side of it. We hire people. But, uh, th- th- those are my sort of not entirely stream of consciousness, but my thoughts about what I think is important and why, quite frankly, I think it's important for us to, to, to go out into the marketplace, because we could be getting the greatest deal in the world for terrific services, or we could find a much better deal for terrific services. And I think it's important for us to find that out. Are you waving at me, Mark?
Yeah, no, I, I, I just, um, not to be rude, but I don't have a little blue hand that I can put up. So just to give some context as to what you're saying, um, Marty, with regards to, um, you know, what you look for. Normally, um, you know, in the past, when I've, I've done this, you know, you put out a request for proposals for legal services, and you list what you're looking for. Um, and, and there will be firms that will come in and, um, you know, will say, it's a one-stop shop. We can provide you legal ser- uh, labor council, we can provide you town council, we can provide you environmental council. We can do all of these things for you. There will be other firms that will come in that may be a little bit smaller, um, and say, yes, we're gonna provide you town council services, and we're partnering with this labor council. You know, we're bringing them in as the labor council, we would suggest as part of the package to use for this. And, and so if they don't cover it, um, you know, then they'll bring somebody else in who will. I found that, um, labor is obviously very specialized. Um, and there are some firms that come in and, you know, and say, well, uh, we brought this person in, so we have labor council services in-house. You, you need to evaluate that before you just, you just say, hey, great, we've got a one-stop shop. But you don't know what the value is of the labor services or the individual pieces that you may have. And the only comment I will make in my experience about large firms, um, I've, I've had large firms in the past, and I'm talking, you know, in excess of 20, 30, 40 lawyers. You know, we had a council that was assigned to us. I saw them at town meeting. You know, uh, other than that, you get passed around, you know, to various attorneys and everything and that, which can be a little disjointed. You know, I've got to remember, I'm working with this attorney on this issue, and this attorney. There never was a conduit. It was, it was, so it can be a little bit jumbled. I think that a lot of communities now are getting away from the large firms, and they're getting to the medium-sized, you know, type of firms who have some resources and some levels of redundancy and some additional areas of expertise beyond, you know, simply town council or labor council, uh, type of thing. So, um, but again, you won't know what you find until, you know, you, you put something out and, you know, and let people know what you're looking for. I think the only other comment I will make is that, you know, you need to make sure that, um, you know, you're, you let people know why you're doing it, you know, and that, you know, so if there's a real interest in, you know, we, we may change firms based on what we see, you know, then people are going to be, you know, a little more aggressive in what they give you in terms of rates, in terms of services, in terms of how much time they put back into the RFP. But if they don't think there's a chance that you may change, then, you know, you may not get the kind of response that you'd be looking for.
All right, I, I, I do very few things as, as an intellectual exercise. So I would not be thinking about doing this if my, if my, my, my eyes and options weren't completely open. This is my view. I don't know where, where other people fall, but that's my view.
Hey, Marty?
Yes, Sam?
Can I, uh, expand on point you made? I actually spend a lot of money on lawyers, and, um,
Good for you, Sam. We thank you.
GDP, that doesn't stand for gross domestic product. And get pitched by a number of them. And I think, uh, in my day job, my experience is you actually learn things from this process. Um, recently went through an exercise for our patent law support and figured out a way to do it in a much more cost-effective and, and outcome-effective way just by listening to how different people pitched it to us. And I think that, again, you, you will likely learn something from people. I think that, per Mark's point, my experience is the big firms tend to generate large amounts of administrative overhead, and the rates tend to be pretty high. So it seems to me the sweet spot is sort of medium-sized, smaller in terms of the ability, not only to have the personal contact and direct, uh, single point of contact that Mark referred to, as well as more attractive rates. Not that, uh, you don't give everybody an op- opportunity to, to come in and talk. But I think, again, the exercise, I've always found to be very educational. And sometimes you wind up thinking, gee, we are, we do have a pretty good situation here, and let's keep it. And, and I, you sleep better knowing that versus, uh, you know, finding out 10 years after the fact, after the fact, wow, there's a better way that we could have done this. So I think the, the educational output alone is very useful from it, and, uh, and you see what happens. So I'm strongly in favor of having a broad view of what we're looking for, listening to people, and then making a decision.
Uh, Brian, looks like you're unmuted.
I am. So I guess I would touch on the point that Mark finished with as, so I'm not a lawyer, but on the consulting engineering side, we run into this a lot. Well, the majority of the work that we do is for municipalities. And there are municipalities that will come back to us for repeat work. You know, with the institutional knowledge that we have with their infrastructure systems, et cetera, there's a benefit to the community to do that. But we also see the side where there are, there are communities that will advertise for something, and, you know, it's known, they're, they're not gonna make a change from a firm that they're working with currently. And they need to satisfy a procurement process. So we know that's not something that we're even going to respond to. And I think that we, we just need to be careful about how we approach this whole thing. Bottom line, if, if we think there's issues, I think we ought to address issues directly, right? And not, you know, hide behind a procurement process with it. Uh, if, if we are going to do it, I think we just need to be sure that the town isn't getting the reputation with, yeah, they're just putting out this RFP, but they're not gonna be doing anything about it. Then you're just not gonna attract the offers that, that we think we might be looking for. So.
Okay, thanks.
I don't think this is a, an exercise in, you know, practice kind of thing. I think we have to be objective, serious, and broad-ranging.
You know, and it, it's such a tricky thing, too, where so many legal issues take so much time to go through. And, you know, from when it starts to when it finishes, to, so, and it's, it's just so difficult for a new, you know, if there was a change made for a new firm to come in and, and get up to speed on, on an ongoing issue as well. So. That's, and which isn't to say that we automatically just keep going with who we have, just because those, there's those challenges, too. So I think we need to decide how we would, uh, just, you know, what the approach is that we would have for, for the whole thing.
Here is my thought, um, and that is, and I, I think I either said this or alluded to it earlier, is, Mark, to, um, you know, we're, we're not gonna invent the wheel here. This has been done before by other communities that have, that bid, it's done every year, that, that bid legal services. If you could get us, you know, a range of examples from, uh, you know, some like communities that have gone through a legal bidding process, let's take a look at, let's see, let's see what it looks like. Um, and also, we might, you know, they, they might be, I'm, I'm not sure if it's, I suspect it's an open process. I was gonna say, we could find out from them what their experience was in terms of responses and the like. And, you know, it's interesting, you, you people are giving lawyers a bad name. The idea that there might be work out there, and lawyers aren't gonna, aren't gonna jump at the possibility of bid for it. Jeez, I thought we had different reputations than that. But, uh, um, again, I, 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 I would like to think that the message we send to our existing council as well is, is that, um, you know, this is nothing personal. This is, you know, we've got a fiduciary responsibility to the town. This process hasn't played itself out in a number of years. And we're gonna take it seriously and make sure that the town is getting the best possible legal representation that it can for balancing that against the cost of that representation. Period. All right.
Agreed.
All right, Mark? So you, you have your homework assignment.
Yep, no, I'm fine. I will get that, um, I will, uh, you know, get those for you. We'll have that the next meeting for your review.
Sounds good. Uh, and then, I don't want to, but, but, but it is, and, and maybe, Mark, I'll sit down with you over the next couple of weeks or more, and, and maybe, um, um, come up with some ways, a, a way to structure a, a, a more global view with the, the whole contractual process. Fair enough?
That's fine. So one question for you, Mr. Chairman, um, would, um, is there particular messaging that I should be providing our town, labor, and special counsel regarding what we're up to? Or wait, wait until we actually have something?
Yeah, we don't know what we're up to yet.
Okay.
We know, yeah. Um, again, I'm not, I'm not, obviously, we're in a public meeting. It's not a matter of hiding the ball. It's just, it's just, it's, it's, we're, we're, we're undergoing a process. And wait, let, let us play that out a little bit and decide exactly what we're gonna do before we communicate exactly what that process is to, to, uh, existing council.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Discussion of process for personnel exit interviews. This was not one of my items, so.
This was mine. Can I go, Marty?
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry, yeah, okay.
I, I, I have trouble telling exactly where the voice is coming from. Yeah, no, 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 go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, so, um, I had asked Marty to put this on the agenda so that, um, we consider a process for exit interviews as, as employees leave. I think there's, there's a huge benefit in doing this. Um, sometimes when people are leaving, they're a little bit more open, you know, to discussions. And it also gives us an opportunity to ask, not us per se, as the Board of Selectmen, but for someone to ask, you know, suggestions of, of maybe things that we could do better or just, um, you know, general comments from somebody. So I'd like the board to consider who that person is. I don't know. I, I don't necessarily think it should be a department head. I don't necessarily think it should be Mr. Purple. Um, I don't know where that would lie, whether it might be something that the Personnel Board might do. But I just, I just think there's great value in taking feedback from somebody's, that, that is leaving the town, you know, for whatever reason, good, bad, or, or, you know, just a greater opportunity for them just to, to get feedback on how we do things as a town.
Great idea.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I, I do it, get great information from it. I think you need somebody who's fairly out of a sort of direct chain of command. I think the Personnel Board's a good idea. And, um, I think it's a great, great thing. Huge source of valuable feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I've watched a couple of the Personnel Board meetings, and, um, there, there are, I'm not gonna come up with the, the, the particular names of the people, but there are a couple of folks on the Personnel Board who clearly have a ton of experience in this area. And, you know, I thinking, I, I think having, you know, one or more of them involved in this process would be of enormous benefit to the town. That's my view.
I totally agree. Lisa, do you, do you think that a union employee could fall under that, too?
That's a very good question. I didn't think about a union employee necessarily, Chelsea, but I, I, there should be a process for that as well. Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to it being Personnel Board for a union, too. Uh, maybe that's something that we can bring to Personnel Board and just at least, um, propose to them. And then if it's not, if, if they don't want to undertake, um, a union, then we kind of figure something else out for the union.
So I wondered, does this also fall within the personnel bylaw? And, you know, what the charge of the Personnel Board is? I, I don't know.
So I wondered about the union contract, if it somehow is an issue that has to be bargained or whatever in terms of participation. Be voluntary, always is voluntary, at least in my experience, people don't have to do it.
Ms. Healy, your hand up?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I just wanted to inform the board. It, this has been done on occasion, not very often at all. Um, i- in the past, it was handled by Russ Millholland when he was serving on the Personnel Board. It was never written into the SAP, it was not formalized in that way. Um, and, and on that point, Ms. Brachio, it was only done- Um, and and on that point, Ms. Braccio, it was only done um for non-union employees. A- again, you know, the town administrator would can obviously weigh in, but I I think it is something that would be a a point of collective bargaining if we were to want to include it into our four-union contracts.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it if, uh, I'm not sure about that, Vanessa. Um, I mean, you know, it it it, yeah, for odd reasons, but but part of our office is um union. And the exit interviews are, again, they're voluntary. It's not like if you don't consent to an interview, you wouldn't hire you.
It was never mandatory, yeah.
People are on their way out the door. I mean, it's a voluntary exercise, and the voluntary request is made to both union and non-union people in our office, and almost everybody agrees to do it. Honestly, most people wanna, you know, uh, have their say on their way out the door. And so I don't think I don't think we'd have to worry about, I suppose, a collective bargaining unit say, could tell their their people, no, we don't want you to do this, but even that's not binding. They're they're leaving.
They're no longer an employee at that point.
So I I I guess my view is, if somebody, Russ Mulholland is perfect. Um, and and again, I think there are some folks on the Personnel Board with that that similar type of expertise. And if if
Including a former labor attorney.
Okay, well, that's a that falls into the area of expertise. But I think it's a great idea. Um, maybe um, uh, Mark, uh, maybe touch base with um Ms. Rosenbloom and see if if they have some thoughts about what 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 a good approach would be. I don't, it shouldn't be a committee. It really should be, it's a different conversation with a committee than a one-to-one conversation. That's been my experience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree. I can uh I can have conversations with the Chair and uh and see what um and see what her thoughts are. But I think it does make a lot of sense. I do agree that obviously, if it's if it's not something that's mandatory, then I don't think, you know, we've got any issues with collective bargaining. Um, so.
Okay.
Awesome.
Excellent.
That was it. Thank you.
All right. Do we have, we have Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Lit in attendance. Is there any public comment in round two, going once, going twice? Is there a motion?
Luke, you adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, none. Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. And it's only ten twenty-three. Have a good rest of the evening, everybody.
Good night.